All right, if I could, I'll call to order the public meeting of the South Eagan Cooperative School Board for April 5th, 2018, on the ex officio chair until we nominate a chair in a few minutes. First on the agenda, we have a public hearing for the purpose of accepting $6,000 from the enhancement learning initiative in support of PACE and also $8,000 from the trust underwritten by the Oleana Jamison, underwritten by Oleana Jamison to support ethics forum hike. So first, I would need to take a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Moved by Mr. Manning, seconded by Mr. Purvis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So, a 198-20 B hearing for any donation over $5,000, we must hear from the public at a public hearing prior to making, taking action with stuff to fund. So, for that, I will open it up to any public who would wish to speak about these two donations. Hearing done, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Gronstra, seconded by Mr. Brown. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We'll accept, formally accept the donation later, both donations later during the consent calendar. The organizational meeting, the first order of business is to nominate and elect a chairperson of the South Eagan Cooperative School Board. What I'll do is accept any nominations from the floor. Once I've received all nominations, we'll take a vote, and whoever has a plurality will be selected chairperson. Are there any nominations for chairperson? Mr. Purvis?
Nominate David Chen.
David Chen, are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Jim Manning.
Jim Manning. Are there any other nominations? All right, I will close nominations. First, we'll take a vote, every board member gets one vote, whoever has a plurality will win and become chairperson. All those in favor of Mr. Chen, please give me a nod. Three, all those in favor of Mr. Manning, please give him a nod. All right. Mr. Manning, do you accept position of chair?
I do.
All right. Jim, you are now the chairperson of the South Eagan Cooperative School Board, and I want you to take over.
Next order of business is to nominate a vice chairman? Can I get, or anyone want to nominate a vice chairman? Howard?
Nominate, nominate Jim.
Do I have his?
Yeah, I was going to nominate.
Yeah. I was going to say, is there any other nominations for a vice chairman? Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. Jim Gronstra's been nominated and seconded. All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Tim. Next order of business, nomination for board secretary. Anyone nomination, anyone want to nominate someone for board secretary? Highly covered, highly covered in board secretary position.
I'll make a deal.
Okay.
What's the deal?
The deal is, I will do secretary if I don't have to do the manifest.
I will take your manifest.
He will take your manifest. Well, yeah. So, I'd like to nominate Steve Coughlin for secretary.
All right. Any other nominations? No? All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, great. You are now the secretary. Next order of business, committee assignments. So, Adam and I, we've been talking about this for about a year, as when I was vice chair. I want to float an idea to the board. So, back in the fall, when I was the acting chair, I created an action spreadsheet, and that action spreadsheet attempted to, you know, source the entire board to say, you know, what are the things that are important to each individual board member, and try to keep a record of it, so that we could bring it to the board and vote on it, and see whether or not it's something the board favored. We are now up to, I want to say something like 44 action items, so it's a lot. Some of them have some crossover. So, I'd like to have a discussion, because those, I mean, that's really unwieldy. It's a really unwieldy list. One of the ways to get after it is to categorize those action assignments, and then pass those along to a committee to discuss. In order to effectively manage that, I think we have to have the right committees, and looking at the list of committees we have here, I mean, some we need, and that we'll need to vote on tonight, like the manifest, policy, some other basic ones, and then others, I don't know that quite fits for some of the discussions we want to have. In addition to that, we're going through the strategic planning process, and so, the thought process might be to have a committee SAU-wide, so have multiple stakeholders from different fields. So, I wanted to open that, those concepts up for discussion right now, to see whether or not the board was in favor of handling those action items that way, and then maybe in May, having a discussion around committees, what kind of committees we need to address those action items moving forward this year. Dave?
Jim, you know, in a deliberative session, I don't think it was Howard or you put together the list of the objectives that we had?
Yep.
Those summarized pretty clearly for me, a lot of the things we wanted to get done, and most of the things that I, well, I didn't look at the 44 list, but a lot of the things that were on the list could fit under those. So, if we had, like, maybe six committees, one for each of those topics, you know, maybe you don't have a committee, you're an ex officio for all of them?
Yep.
And we use that as a way to drive things forward. So, for example, I could be on one committee, and Steve could be on the same committee. We would have to have redundant models, redundant roles. So, you know, you could be chair of one, or sub-chair of one, but then you basically have to take other people on your committee with you, and then we report as a, as a group to see progress. The other thing on that list was, you know, and I put things on the list that were not approved by the board, but there were things that were approved by the board. They should remain on that list, the other ones should, we should, if we don't get them approved by the board, then they should drop off the list, really.
Right. Right. I think that's, I think that's worthy of discussion. Does anybody want to weigh in on what Dave is saying here?
Yeah, I would agree. I also thought that the list was a way for us to develop our goals that we want to discuss with Adam, and have him move forward as our goals for the, for the school year coming up. So, I'm wondering if we're talking about dual purposes for that spreadsheet.
To me, it's possible. Do you want to have any comment you want to make, Adam? Probably want to handle it? Oh, you would prefer to handle it?
Sure. So, the board should have its goals pretty clearly articulated, and we should be working over the next 11 months to work towards those goals, whatever they are, for the board year. As you know, elections happen, and board members turn, turn over, and it really, that kind of syncs us up with the budget process as well. In terms of organization, I really see four broad areas that I think would always exist in a school system, and those are policy and policy development. Another is kind of the business and operations bucket, all of those things, transportation, finance, budget, food service, all of those, life safety, those sort of things. Curriculum, instruction, and assessment, if you more easily remember it as CIA, and that whole bucket of things. And then student services, all of the things that we do for our students with various needs of many types, including students covered by the McKenney-Ventow Act, students that are, have 504 plans, students with IEPs, et cetera. So, those four broad areas seem to be the basis of any school system, and would have, regardless of whatever our priorities are, I think those committees would be good standing committees. There's also, what I've seen happen in other school districts is, there are people in our communities that have expertise in those different areas, being able to pull them in to be a part of the process early on, as opposed to after the board acts, has some value. But, I would not want to have a South Eagan CIA committee and a South Eagan business and operations committee, because then we would have an Amherst CIA committee, and a Mount Vernon CIA committee, and committee asphyxiation would occur. I just invented that, by the way. So, I think having those things SAU-wide, which is also in line with our strategic value of one community that we discussed with this. That's my point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else want to weigh in with their ideas on this? Dwayne, it looks like you want.
Yeah, on the spreadsheet, assuming we're talking about the spreadsheet?
It's the spreadsheet.
Or is it something else?
Well, it's the spreadsheet, and then the idea that with 40-something items on there, can we leverage the committees to start to get after some of this and prioritize some of this for us? Okay. So, these are initiatives that are not necessarily all board-agreed initiatives, but initiatives of the individual board members. Yeah. And I think the idea would be that, let's say, you get a number of these action items that we have on there that would fall under curriculum, instruction, and assessment. It would go to a committee, it could get discussed in that committee, let's say, Dwayne, you were on that committee, you could discuss some of those things that might be priority overlap. You could come back to the board and say, coming out of that committee, out of all these items, we really want to get after these three, or these four. And then, as a board, we could vote on that, and officially say, as a one body, these are the things that we want to commit to, so we have some focus, and then we don't lose follow-up either. Because it seems like sometimes we do, we do lose follow-up, and not, not for anybody's fault, it's just, we've got four different, four different boards, and only a certain number of administrators and board members to tackle it. That's the idea. David?
Can I ask Adam a question? The problem I'm having is, some of the topics that are already on the list are specific to South Eagan.
Sure.
So, if we, if we made this a, you know, an SAU board, they, there would be no, I mean, there would be conflicting comments, you know, there would not necessarily be consistent with what the problem we're trying to deal with is. How would you get around that?
Well, I don't, I see this as delegation, not abdication, so I think that there would certainly be times where a broad base, or an SAU-like committee, would look at something that's South Eagan-based, and the South Eagan board would really own that in the end anyway. I mean, those, these are advisory boards, if they're created by a board, they advise a board, and the board would pick one on accident anyway. So, similar to a policy and the policy process, where the SAU board looks at a policy first, but then each individual board has to adopt it, and could potentially make changes to it. We'd prefer not, but I would see it be kind of the same way. So, I think there are times where it would have to be South Eagan-only topics, but I think most of the time, things would fly across the K-12 spectrum.
I'm thinking of the...
Sorry, I'm sorry. Tim, Tim, next, let me come back to you.
So, is it your intent, then, to not, so these committees that are on our, in our package, they're basically going to get wiped clean, and then we're going to start from scratch, based on lines, or areas that Adam kind of outlined, or what's the intention?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So, I think, I think that's a discussion we have to have. There are some of, some of the committees are committees that you need, like you need somebody working manifest right away, we need somebody probably working policy right away, we probably want a liaison to advisory finance committee right away, things like that. Community council.
A number of these are liaisons, not just...
Yeah. Yeah. I think what we're talking about is committees specifically, like, I'll give you, for example, like, there's a tech committee, does that tech committee fall under some other area? Does that tech committee, we also, because we have a, we have a goal about data, to be data informed, does that come under the same area? I don't know. It's just a discussion that we should have.
We also have a communication committee, but it was vacant this past year. Those kind of things would be under the umbrella of student-student.
Right. Amy?
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to look at this and, and say, okay, these are liaisons, these are positions that we have to appoint, but let's take a real hard look at all of the committees, because who knows when they were put on this list, and if they're valid anymore. And we need to reassign them to, to have different titles. But I think it does make sense, I do think we should probably decide on the liaison tonight, is my suggestion.
Okay. So, if there's no other comments, what I'd like to do is go through some of these liaison positions, and see who wants to fill them, and then we'll turf some of these others until May, and then in May, we can discuss what committees we want, and then try to fill in the action items, because I think the goal of the board is by June, we want to be getting after the budget as quickly as possible, right? So, the goal heading in. So, let's take the first one, advisory finance committee liaison. Any recommendations of who wants to take that one?
I think when you, when you mention it, say who has it now?
I didn't, I asked him, I didn't get a list of...
David Chen and Dwayne have that now.
You have it? Yeah, okay.
Don't help me, man.
And how many people usually, is usually two on that one?
You guys want to keep it?
No. I prefer not to.
No, okay.
We never met.
You never met?
Never met.
Okay.
Well...
Howard?
Let me ask Lisa, is it important for the board to meet with you guys on the advisory committee, like that?
I kind of feel like it would just one more meeting for you all to go through, considering we reported back to the board more this year?
Would you help me over the podium, please? Sorry. Yep.
Okay, so Lisa Eastland, advisory finance committee chairperson for FY19. I felt like we reported and had enough rapport coming into the board meetings this year. It was more than in past years, that maybe that would be enough communication. I don't want to add, you know, one more meeting to somebody's plate. I don't feel like we had any questions or situations that we couldn't get answered outside of that forum. I would say what we, where we struggled near the end was when the business manager had to be up here, because dealing with budget up here, and we had questions that were more budget-related in that sense, rather than like board policy kind of relation questions.
Okay. So, would the board feel comfortable if the liaison to the advisory finance committee be the chair?
Have at it. Please do.
All right. Jim Manning, liaison.
Do you feel it's necessary? Obviously, you feel it's necessary.
Well, I just think that, given, given what she said, and given the fact that the budget is such an important part of the board's role, it probably makes sense for the chair to take that on.
And historically, it has always been.
Yeah.
That's how it should have changed.
Yeah. Because I think that's what we did at the Amherst.
We did.
Yeah, okay. Athletic liaison committee, right now, it's myself and Tim.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There's an athletic liaison, and there's a recreation liaison.
It would be insane.
Would, I know they're different, but could they be common? I mean, they're related.
Adam?
The athletic, and early athletic committee met last week. Were there any other meetings?
That was our first one this, this year. But, in the past, yeah, in the past, we've met more often, just with a lot of things going on we did not. I just want to answer any of these questions real quick. In the past, I've been both athletic liaison, as well as direct liaison. The problem for me that, for me personally, is getting from Mount Vernon. It's a, it's an Amherst recreation program, and Mount Vernon has no stake in the game.
Yep.
So, it didn't make sense, and that's why I moved out of that role, and other people started to go in. So, I think we'll wait for a little bit, perhaps, for us to move on. But I would like to remain in our staff, but I believe in...
All right. So, why don't we keep guessing?
You first.
I'm sorry, put my glasses back on, Steve. Go ahead, Steve.
I'll try and be, make large motions.
There you go.
So, this, this is, this is one that, it's not statutory, we created because we thought we needed it. It seems to me like it could be the first candidate to the restructuring god, in terms of, let's see how it fits in a new structure, rather than just replicate it. That would be my suggestion.
My only comment on that is, I know we are going to potentially be having an issue with the turf field, and the financing of the replacement, so I think maybe this year, it would make sense to have somebody who will be working with Stephanie on that project.
So, I think, Tim, you said you wanted to keep it, right?
Yeah. So, I could, I could do that. And we've already kind of started, well, we talked about it, anyway, so not much down there.
Howard?
Also, from our November 1st meeting last year, the advisory commented that we need to have a thorough review of the items and the clubs going forward. So, I think it's important that we keep this this year, so that we can go, go back and look at all those forms that we need, and all the policies, and all the handbooks and stuff, to make sure that they're up to date.
Okay. So, why don't we, is the board okay with having a single delegate to... So, you want to join?
I would.
Okay. All right, so Tim and Howard? Okay, good. Next is the community council liaison, let's skip CIP. What is CIP? Oh, yeah, yeah, CIP. Yeah, go ahead, actually.
So, CIP is a capital improvement plan committee, it's an Amherst-only plan, but it spans at Oxy and Tax Mount Vernon as well, because it's been a key part of their category as well. But, so the, the town of Amherst has a CIP committee that looks at all capital projects over the next six years, and tries to determine a plan and the sequence for those things. It has not met the last two years, that's why it's probably hazied some of our memories, but Gordon Leedy from the town of Amherst is leading that up this year. The reason why this will be important, especially this year, is our South Eagan construction project that was funded this year on the ballot will certainly be something we'll need some advocacy for during the CIP planning process, so having a member or two would be helpful. I understand that the centenarian on the board, Mr. Coughlin, is often filled that role, so I did presume that he might, again, and I did inform Amherst Town that perhaps it would be Mr. Coughlin again, but certainly he has to change that.
A centenarian, that sounds like 100 years old.
Or worth one cent. Either way. That was the, that was, that was the meaning I was going for. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I've done it since the CIP was first instituted. Familiar with the spreadsheet.
So, Steve will put you out for CIP. Next up, obviously, is community council liaison. Amy has that role right now.
And I would like to continue.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else want it? All right. Congratulations, Amy.
Thanks.
Let me see.
I'd be happy to enlighten you newbies.
Yes, please, please do.
So, we have the, that expendable trust fund for maintenance and capital improvements, and there is a process, which is actually cloned from the Amherst School Board process to expend it, which requires that a committee meet and make a recommendation to the board, and the board acts on that recommendation. That committee is required to have, among other things, two board members on it, plus various named roles of community members.
Just a question, does that committee only meet in the spring because of the money being expended in July 1?
No, the, no, the money can be spent from the expendable trust any time, and so that committee is, is a case of, keep them in a, in a glass box with a sign that says, in case of emergency, break glass. So, they do nothing until we decide we want to go, we need to expend that expendable trust fund for some reason. So, it's, it's met, Howard did it once, it's met like once or twice ever.
And what it takes is, it takes, like you said, the meeting of the people, and then we'll have to have a public meeting to declare that we're going to use it, and that's how you, John, you can use it any time you want.
Yeah.
And you just have to have a public meeting.
The trick is to appoint this committee now, before we need the money, so we're not like, at the last minute screaming to find people to be on it.
Yeah. Who's, who's, is that you right now?
No, no, it's never been me.
Never been you? Howard? Howard, yeah.
So, so Steve, you said there are two people, what?
I'm pretty sure it was two.
Who else is on it?
Well, oh, there's like someone from the SAU, someone from the school, someone from the advisory finance, it's that kind of list of people.
I have Amy as a member too.
Oh, really?
Howard, you want to, you want to keep that?
Someone named Amy must be on it at all times.
She did a fine job.
So, Howard, Howard and Amy will stay if they want.
It hasn't met.
No. Okay, good.
I don't mind. You don't mind? I mean, they only, they only meet if you have to use the money.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, the next one, we definitely have to find folks for this one, so this is the manifest, and, and Steve has already said he wants the back out, we need two people for it, so. I think, Dwayne, you're, are you also on the manifest? Yeah.
Special draw prize, someone goes home with it tonight.
Is it done? Howard wants to take the manifest. You want to stay with it, Dwayne? All right.
I signed, so one of you has to sign.
We, as I mentioned in one of my, you know, updates, we're going to be experimenting with the Mont Vernon School District, assuming that goes well, I wouldn't be surprised that we switch over to the Mont Vernon process sometime during this fiscal year, which will greatly reduce the workload for board members.
Are we going to do it here?
We'll see, we'll probably, we'll make sure that something goes on.
Don't tell me until...
No, I'm sure during the course of this school year, we would transfer over.
We'll see how Mount Vernon goes first.
We'll see how Mount Vernon goes. No problem.
We'll work the kinks out first. It's going to come to you.
Okay. Next one, you're welcome. Next one we have, policy, policy committee. Howard, you on the policy committee?
No, it's, now it's...
You guys want to keep it?
Yeah.
I, I would. I'm desperate for it.
I'm, I'm not desperate, but I am interested. But, that's okay. Are you, are you? Never mind, they're committed.
Right about, right about this meeting Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning, fast and furious, almost every week.
PPC, the TSA.
Yeah.
The next one we have is PPC, everything Brick School, will be for, for Brick School improvement.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so the next one, we'll, we have PPC, PTSA liaison, and probably the Brick School Improvement Committee, the ones we can round out, so we have to move the discussion forward to May. So, any nominations for the PPC liaison?
PPC?
PPC.
I don't want to hear it.
Okay. Dwayne. Dwayne and Steve. Next, PTSA liaison.
Who was it last year?
Jim Lee.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll do it again. I tried it.
Do I try?
Yeah, I tried it once, boys. I don't think I ever made a meeting, but...
The chair should do as few as possible.
Yeah, exactly.
Put down Tim and David.
Tim and David.
We're going to, just for right now, we're going to skip publicity and communications, skip direct liaison, skip the tech committee, let's go to SAU 39 Brick School Improvement Committee.
This person will also serve as the SAU 39 Budget Committee member, remember we talked to the SAU board about, we established the mechanism this year?
This was big at last.
It was, yep.
I, I don't mind.
Anyone want to join Howard on that?
I'm assuming most of these meetings are concerned with it.
So, I don't know.
Okay. Howard. And then, what I'd like to do is move to have a further discussion around consolidating some of these committees in May as it relates to the action items that we've identified. Is everybody in agreement with that? Okay.
You can put me as the NHSDA delegate, I'm on the, I'm on the board.
And the board communication, we're going to talk about that.
Yeah, in May, yeah. Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. I appreciate getting that, doing that relatively quickly. Next up is appointment of school district officials.
The board is required, because it's a cooperative school district, only the moderator[1709.41] The board is required, um, because it's a cooperative school district, only the moderator is elected, um, and, uh, George Bauer. George Bauer, thank you. George Bauer was elected and is accepted. He's been sworn in as the moderator. Um, but the, the school board must appoint a clerk, a treasurer, and in this case also a deputy treasurer. Um, so Chris Jansen has agreed to be the clerk once again. CJ Butler has agreed to be the treasurer once again, and David Sullivan has agreed to be the deputy treasurer. And so, uh, the board would need to take a motion. Um, I suppose you could make one motion if you wanted for all three of those positions.
So I'll make the motion to accept Chris Jansen as the clerk, CJ Butler as the treasurer, and David Sullivan as the deputy treasurer.
Second? Amy, seconds? All in favor?
Say aye.
All right. All opposed? Motion passes. All right, so next up is, let's call to order the regular meeting at 6:36 PM. First on the agenda is if I could ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we stand, sit down, if I could just take a moment of silence for those people who don't salute the flag. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, announcements, associate superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A number of, of items just to speak about for the public's benefit. I think the school board has already heard about a number of these items via email, but first, we're anticipating the Safe Havens report on life safety to be delivered by the end of next week. It's early, uh, being drafted even as we speak. Anticipate that being, uh, ready for the May board meeting. I would expect that would take a significant amount of time at the May board meeting. Uh, you'll recall that the board directed me back in January, I think it was, to have this ready by the May, uh, board meeting, and we're right on track to do that. We're excited to be able to share that with the board and with the public. To that end, I'll be expecting the board to support some expenditures at that time from the unassigned fund balance, and that certainly will be a topic of discussion. Um, I should also note that the community council security subcommittee has been working very hard, uh, over the past year as well on security, and they are planning on coming to the May board meeting and presenting their report on security and safety for South Heagan High School, um, something they're, they're excited to do, um, in May. Uh, also Lynn Lyons, uh, who is a clinical psychologist, will be here on April 16th from 6:30 to 8:30 to present on anxiety. Uh, it's open to all parents, uh, of both the Amherst and South Heagan and Montburning School Districts, all three of them, um, and, uh, will be a great presentation. We're very excited about that, again, April 16th, 6:30 to 8:30. Uh, we're in the process of hiring our athletic director. We have first round interviews, um, next week with second round coming shortly thereafter. We have a number of qualified candidates, and we're, we're excited to have, uh, hopefully have a candidate to bring forward at the May meeting for that very important position. Uh, the South Heagan 2.0 project, as it's, uh, currently called, and maybe that will change, but, um, the architectural and engineering fees that were passed by voters in March to look at a, a facilities project here at the high school, uh, we're moving forward with the planning phase of that. Uh, the, we'll ask for a couple of board members to participate, um, in that project. Uh, Paige Castell, who is a, currently a sophomore, is taking charge of that project for now. She's asked for a number of other students to join her. Um, I will be there as well, um, as will both Porter, Stephanie, Rob, and then we'd like a board member or two, um, to participate, uh, in the planning phase, um, of that project, but we're very excited about that, uh, and for Paige's leadership. Uh, CIP, we already spoke about a few minutes ago. Uh, the grant application, as was discussed by the board, we applied for a grant through the state of New Hampshire for security funds. Um, our grant proposal was received, uh, later than, than some others, and they've run out of funding. So we've been denied for now, but if more funding becomes available, um, we'll see what, we'll see what happens with that. We should be near the front of the list for that. And, uh, if you keep track of New Hampshire's finances, you'll know that March was a very, very strong month for the state of New Hampshire, and there it had a fairly sizable surplus. So fingers crossed that some of it comes our way. Uh, and then finally, and perhaps most pertinent to some folks, um, our graduation date of June 1st has been formally, uh, approved by the Commissioner of Education and will not need to move. Uh, for those of you who paid close attention to one of our school closing announcements, we made a note that, uh, we were looking at the graduation date, um, and we, uh, had to work, uh, very closely with both the, both the Commissioner of Education and the Attorney General's Office to make sure that our graduation date of June 1st could be confirmed. Um, so it is. Um, anybody who is outside dancing and making snowfall, please cut it out. Um, we want to make sure that we have no more issues regarding snow days, but I'm very pleased that June 1st will be confirmed for us. I will also note that there is some talk about, uh, changing of an administrative rule, such that a graduation date could be set a year in advance and never have to move. Um, and we would be in support of that change, should it come. No promises there, that's, that's a hope, uh, right now, but it's something that Massachusetts does, and we hope that that particular regulation crosses the border. Thank you. If there's any questions, we'd gladly answer.
Adam, the, um, the funding of that fund for, uh, security the state provided, eighteen million dollars.
Yeah.
My recollection of that was that, and I could be wrong, but my recollection of that was that funding came from some sort of, uh, essentially the building fund that, that the state provided to match, like, when we built South Heagan, it was because it was a, a combined...
But that position is, um, still, yes. Officer Smith has been promoted to detective, so, uh, yeah. And I can jump on on that. So, uh, I'm sorry, Rob, I didn't tell you this, but yeah, that, that is, that is public, um, and I can nominate that person tonight for the board approval.
Great.
Either way, either way is fine. So it's up to the board. If you want to make that nomination tonight or wait.
Yeah, I think you should do it tonight. Everybody, everybody agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would work well for the transition plan as well. Uh, so Heather Blaze, uh, is, is her name. Um, she's been a, an officer for a number of years in town. Um, as it turns out, she and I attended, uh, training, uh, a few years ago, um, while I worked in Windham. Uh, ironically, um, it was actually a response to active shooter training that she and I both attended. Um, I think she's a phenomenal officer and will be an asset to the school. Uh, I met, met, and reviewed her last week as well, uh, or maybe it was earlier this week as well, and she'll be a tremendous asset to the school. So, uh, no problem making that recommendation for the board's approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to nominate Heather Blaze to the position of South Heagan SRO?
I'll make the motion.
Him. Second, Howard. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero. Awesome.
Can I ask one question on that?
Yes.
Um, could you get a copy of the job description for the SRO? Um, I just, I'd like to understand what that job entails, and I know there's certain police ties and security duties that are necessary. Are there educational components that are in the job description, or is it something that we want to take a look at?
Yep.
Um, and I'm not saying to have the discussion tonight, but I would just like to understand what that position actually entails.
Yes, Howard.
Could you also add on to that, how much time do they think that the officer is actually away from school? Uh, I noticed that somebody started a petition saying that they wanted the SRO be on site all the time. So that got me wondering, how much time are they away from site? So if we have some kind of a breakdown of when they are away, that would help a lot of the short term.
Yeah.
Maybe you want to make a rant?
No, I was going to say, it's definitely non-public.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. That would be great if we can get that explanation from, thank you. Adam.
The other document would be the memorandum of understanding which entails the, kind of relationship between the school district and the police department.
That'd be nice. Thank you.
You're welcome. So Rob, if you want to continue your report.
Sure. Uh, some recent requests, so I passed out a hard copy of just some of the information that was, uh, asked recently about winter session. Uh, just a breakdown, uh, we recently had a winter session. It is, uh, the 10th grade trip. Uh, the last couple of years, um, it's become, it's always been an adventure, but boy, it's really been an adventure. Uh, weather has been keeping us on our toes. So, uh, there was a request, just a breakdown of number of students who participated in each trip, and you'll see the titles of each individual trip, and then the number of students who did an independent study. In 2018, independent study, 16 students. The last couple of years, uh, 13, 14, in winter session and independent study. Uh, we really encourage the group, uh, involvement. There are different reasons why, uh, folks need or want an independent study. Uh, it has always been part of the winter session, um, offerings, and, uh, I'm happy to take questions, uh, about winter session, independent study. Yeah.
Winter session. Um, we have titles here, but this doesn't, I can figure out DC State of Mind.
Right.
But if we could, uh, next year, I don't need now, but I'd like to know, um, how where these guys are going. Where's the walking, is that here, local, or is that the gosh, well, sorry?
Yeah, yeah. So that's, uh, I didn't even get it on like that, it has been, I just wasn't sure what level of detail.
Okay.
Um, tonight, uh, from, uh, looking into it, I think it's sort of kind of a soft cap they use over the years, about 12 independent studies, and they can go, uh, a couple in either direction. And, um, they are often, uh, after a first choice isn't received, there's, uh, suggesting that maybe a second choice is not, you know, acceptable, and so sometimes we still have independent study that way. But more often than not, there's really genuine interest that students have developed, uh, that we want to honor, especially with a more personalized approach and competency-based, um, system. And if you look on the backside, winter session statement of purpose, you'll notice there is a little bit of a tone towards, we do value the fact that the collaboration and the group work is kind of a priority, but, uh, as I said, independent studies have always been part of it, and sometimes, uh, reasons where the individual student cannot be involved in more of the group work or going, you know, uh, into an extended learning environment. So, as I said, it was a kind of a recent request, and, uh, again, happy to take questions.
Howard.
When they do an independent study, what's required when they're done with that study?
You know, the same as what would be group work. It would be established prior that you're going on this, uh, experience, and this is, uh, the target goals that you have for it, and just the reflection, um, and, uh, any other measurements that they, they claim on. So, uh, like any independent study, here's what we're going to look at, learning, how we're going to assess it, and how we're going to measure that.
What they're required to do, the question, uh, written, written question.
Yeah, yeah. And as I said, you know, speaking with, um, Dave and Andy, who've been great coordinators in the past, um, it is a little bit of a finessing. We really do honor and like the idea of, uh, being part of a, one of the larger groups, but there are valid reasons that sometimes, uh, if you're independent studying.
I, I know for a fact that one, one student had something that he was going to go away on, and at the last second, uh, he got injured and could not go on that trip. And his independent study was, uh, going around to Maple Sugar House and doing a study on how they make maple syrup. So, I mean, he got really involved into it, so I just wondered what was required once he got that done.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a good question. That, I mean, I, I've had this question too, because, you know, we're looking at mastery learning and competency-based education and personalized learning, and so I could see how this could be important. Uh, in talking to others, I think, you know, maybe the, the question is just when they do independent studies, is there rigor? You know, is there rigor associated with doing the independent study that's not, um, not a vacation?
Right.
You know, that where you come back and you write a nice reflection? Yeah, what is required? Dwayne? Of, uh, what is required of, uh, anyone that participates in the winter session? I think the requirement should be saying, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. David?
Rob, how would this fit into mastery learning? Would this be an honor thing, or this honors thing, or would this be, I mean, it's not a whole semester long.
No, it's just during our winter session. It's a week long. No, it's just during our winter session week. Instead of, uh, participating in one of the, um, designed group experiences, they'll create an independent study.
My question was, how does it get put on the transcript, or does it?
Oh, no, it's not.
Oh, it's not on the transcript? Okay.
Um, next issue, community service coordinator. Um, I think, uh, the, the wonder was, um, now that Maggie's gone, how are things, how are things going? I think you can tell by the little outline, Maggie left, and there, I think, are four or five names, uh, on there as relative to, uh, picking up, uh, what she had done for years. She was pretty much a force of nature, so her responsibilities included community service coordinator. Um, and so relative to kind of being a liaison to the community, Marin, Sally, Tim Cottrell, and John Young, uh, have intersected, uh, and become the group that if community needs to, uh, have access to students or want to do a posting, um, those are the people that, uh, we put them in contact with. As far as the actual postings and recording hours of community service, Marin, uh, has been doing that. And then Maggie also helped with service learning classes, where we created, uh, internal experiences for students relative to their service learning, and Tim Cottrell and John Young have, uh, taken that over. You'll notice a little aspect near postings and recording hours. We had planned to do this, uh, a couple of years ago, when it was a good time for transition. We, uh, have secured a software called X2 Ball, and that's connected to Naviance, and Naviance is our post-grad planning software that students use. And what that does is it manages all the experiences, the students' hours, it creates a community service, uh, transcript for students. So we are looking to ramp that up to the classes of 2019, 2020, 2021, um, and we'll have some staff and student training. So, um, if you can imagine, what we would do is we would go out and solicit, or if folks call and say they'd like to create a, um, community service experience, this software, um, allows the students to simply go to that experience, they validate it on the other side, and then it's just essentially, when Maggie joked when she began, it was, she would collect all the index cards and put it on a, here's Johnny's name and how many hours. So, um, it's time that we have, uh, a little bit more of a 21st century approach to that. The other things that Maggie was, uh, involved in was the Interact Club, and Claudine Hesmer, Hussein, yeah, Hussein, that correct, that was nice enough to, uh, take that over. And Maggie also got herself involved in the school store, uh, and sometimes community service hours, uh, for students who worked in there. Tim, Holly, Palapa, and John Young, uh, are working with that. And then also Maggie helped, um, with some of the courses, where our business courses or our experiential learning in, uh, entrepreneur or marketing would use the school store, and Holly has taken that over where it really should reside out of the curriculum. What we did notice is, as I said, you know, very, you know, seriously, Maggie was kind of a force of nature, so what we're going to do to be a little bit more proactive, where this year we found ourselves being reactive, when people called, we would respond to them. We, uh, did some work, uh, to reallocate some funds into stipendies, and we're starting to, uh, explore a stipended position for a community member to be that more proactive and go out and solicit and to, um, you know, make those community connections. That Maggie buys, being Maggie and living in the community was just fantastic, if you want to do it. Question?
Amy.
So Rob, on this X2 Ball, I'm wondering if there's any ability for that to, um, help students create or populate a CV or resume? Because a lot of times students won't have actual work experience, so community service could do that?
Yeah, and we're, we're also getting some more training on that, and it connects with Naviance. Yeah, that's why we...
Is it templates? I don't know, maybe it can be something or something, and that, you know, a lot of students aren't trained on how to create resumes.
And so one of the reasons we chose it, as I said, is just, uh, integrates with Naviance.
Okay.
And so we just need a little bit more, when we do our training this spring and summer, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. David has questions.
Here, Rob, what is the history of this coordinator? I mean, when they first started the school, there were two women, Chris Fosh and Sharon Whitehouse, and they, they were volunteers. They just did it on their own. And, because, because service was a part of the school's founding. And then along the way, it became a stipended position or a permanent position. What was the transition on that? Is there...
It probably a little bit predates me, but I would imagine as it grew relative to, as you said, community service was a requirement, and it probably was in a little bit of a vacuum, so you need this many hours, and so somebody needed to manage the hours. But... So you need this many hours and so somebody needed to manage the hours. But as it evolved a little bit more toward where quite frankly, I'll talk about this a little bit, um, Maggie's position, when she left, was being reimagined more like an extended learning coordinator. So that's when you'll see Tim being a little bit more of that, uh, that role. So I can only imagine is as community service started to lean more toward, um, job shadowing, internship, that position evolved as well. And it was more than let's log hours and became more of community connection. That started to have some credit bearing elements to it. Now, think of it even next generation where quite literally we need an extended learning, uh, um, coordinator to really, really start building credit bearing experiences, employee classings, et cetera. So that's what Tim is kind of morphing himself into. But at the same time, we need that community connection, let's go out, we need some health risks. And that's, I think, where we're going to bring that part back to a stipended position for an energetic local person who would have that kind of characteristic of Maggie. If that makes sense.
Somehow if you could connect that in with a chamber of commerce or something like that, you know, that would be.
Yes, that's exactly, so, yep.
The rotary or something like that, cause that would be a really match.
Yep, exactly. And so what we found this year obviously was there was without that dynamic personality, we were being a little bit more reactive to folks asking for community service, uh, students. And that's where we think that that stipended position will, will help. And the other thing, I think there was a little, uh, wonder about, and Adam, I think, alluded to it really when he talked about the safe havens, but safety and security, um, there was discussion about maybe some of those simpler, low hanging fruit. But when safe havens showed up, they really didn't leave anything to us. Uh, so they're really comprehensive relative to what they wanted to explore. So we've just done some of the simpler things over the last couple of months while we're waiting for safe havens relative to safety and security. One of them is, um, just reinvesting in our trainings and our lockdown drills and communication with teachers, uh, getting feedback after drills and, and responding accordingly. Also, we've noticed during those drills, um, that our system, the physical system of those door locks are integral to our current protocols. Um, so we are doing an inventory of every door battery life and getting ourselves on a, on a cycle because we can't afford, you know, it's, they're not hardwired. But we really can't afford for our current protocol for door batteries to, uh, not be working. So we're going to get ourselves on a, on a rotation. So a straight inventory of every door, how it's working, new batteries and, uh, constantly testing those. Um, and we're beginning with Kelly this spring, as the weather gets nicer, the idea of redefining spaces. So we talked a little bit about, um, redefining spaces for students to make it a little bit clearer where students can avail themselves of outdoor spaces. Uh, our culture right now is, um, that any space could be a teaching and learning space and that's healthy. But at the same time, we think that, um, we'll get recommendations from safe havens that you want to minimize, really define those spaces. Um, and that will make, um, things a little bit easier in case of the president. So that would include, uh, some signage, that would include additional things and simplified picnic tables and garbage bins that say, here's where students, outdoor spaces. So those are kind of what was left to us after the safety haven said they wanted to, taking comprehensive education. So we're also eagerly awaiting the, the forward report.
Yes, Howard.
Before I was a bus driver, I was extraordinary. I have a pretty, pretty extensive background in security and law enforcement. And, uh, so as I walk around the campus, I'd see things that I, I think that need to change. And one of the questions that started this whole conversation about what have we done so far? We've talked about this the last several months. There's things that we could be doing that minimizes, you know, the, the risk that we have on the campus. So with that in mind, I'm going to make a motion to have Adam Steele direct Rob Scully to move all the visitors parking spots, spaces in the front of the school, to the front of the school that we have in the faculty parking lot. And I have signs made to direct all the visitors to go in the front door to where Linda's office is or whoever's working the front window. And in addition, I'd like to have Rob have all the teachers immediately park in the faculty parking lot and assign numbers to the spaces to each teacher. This would greatly increase the accountability of completion time in the, in the case of emergency.
Do we have a motion on the, on the table? I'll second that. Do we have a second from David? Discussion?
Yeah. Um, so, Adam, I know you've been talking with Safe Haven. I know we don't have the report yet. Do you have an indication that they will be making recommendations in regards to something similar to this or can you give us some insights? I guess I'd, I guess I would want to know that before I would agree to a motion because we may be pretty sure with what Safe Haven would do.
Yeah, I, I'm, uh, very sure that Safe Havens will be making recommendations about different spaces and how they should be repurposed and signage, um, how traffic, those should be up and so forth.
So I, I guess I wouldn't, for me, I, I would have some concern. I, I appreciate what you're saying, Howard. I just, I feel that we're getting the report and recommendation from Adam at the next board meeting. So I would be worried that if we're going to put the safety and security measure into place just 30 days before we're going to be getting a full-blown recommendation, that maybe it's different than what Safe Haven is going to recommend.
Can I read, can I read about that?
Uh, sure, go ahead. And then Wayne.
I respect what you just said, but here is what I, what I think. No matter what we do at the, at the school, our first main concern should be the safety of the teachers and the staff and the students. And to put this in effect doesn't cost any money and it makes, uh, the accountability so much faster. As it is now during lockdown, Scotty has to go in the, that parking lot, go out in the front parking lot and do other things. This way it would be one accountability and he wouldn't have, he, it doesn't cost us anything. So when we talked about this security in the past, I said, why don't we start with things that we, it's not going to cost us money? And this was one of the items that's not going to cost us any money. So I, I don't see any reason why we should not proceed with this.
Wayne.
Yeah, you started with the expression, low hanging fruit. And I don't see the downside in the things we know that should be improved and know that can be taken care of and don't cost anything. I don't see the upside in waiting, uh, cause you never know when an event's going to occur. It might not be convenient. Events might not be convenient for our timetable to think about and consider and consider and consider. We know there's some things that should be done right now. Why aren't we doing them?
Any else? Uh, Dave, David and Amy.
I, I don't know. Uh, I mean, I don't understand your idea, but what, what's the downside of it? It's just moving, telling the teachers to move their cars around for the short period of time that maybe something else will come up? Is that really the only? Maybe Rob can help the least. Adam can help.
Yeah, I think.
Is that the only downside to it? A disruption once and then you?
I leave that for you folks to decide, but Howard's exact, uh, proposal was some of our rough drafting of redefining spaces. And Amy's point was exactly where we said, okay, is that going to coincide with, uh, what Safe Haven? So that exact sentiment is, was part of our, uh, ideas of redefining spaces. I just mentioned the student ones, but you know, having it clear, here's where visitors are, here's clear signage, everybody's in the back for accountability. But we did pump the brakes specifically because we, Safe Havens, that was under what they were going to look at. So should we wait for their recommendation before we do it?
Oh, so I want to follow up question.
And then Amy.
Is that, are you saying that the disrupt, the, um, there's an expenditure to it associated with signs and stuff like that?
But that, that was covered in some, uh, funding we had already in safety and security. So the only reason we paused was Safe Havens is very clear that it's a comprehensive, really integrated. So, uh, would that be their recommendation, um, when we got the report back? But as far as redefining spaces and creating here's visitors only and, and all faculty's in the back, we had similar sentiments. We were waiting for the Safe Havens too.
Amy and then Tim.
That's right. I'm here with the other.
Okay. Tim?
So I, I get what you're saying and I, and if there's absolutely more or less, uh, no cost associated with it, then I don't see a problem, nothing in front of Safe Havens. I guess what I would like to know is what happens if Safe Haven says, not bad, but this is really, this is what we recommend and we're, you know, professionals in the industry and you guys hired us to go look and give a comprehensive review on. So if that needs to change, what's the impact? Is it turmoil? Is there a cost associated with that? You know, so are we making a change and then 30 days, 60 days, whatever the time is later, doing another change? What's, you know, I, I want to make sure that that's not going to be a problem. Personally, I don't really care if it changes a hundred times. If it's not an issue for anybody, then we can keep changing it all day long, change it every day, you know? So, you know, they don't get active shooters out there starting to narrow in on a particular parking spot, you know?
So my question would be, how many teachers actually park at the front? And I know we have plenty of spots in that. So it would just be a matter of taking those teachers from the front and putting them in the back in a science spot. And then you have all the teachers down. The only ones that would be out in front would be administration.
Amy and then Steve. Well, Steve's next and then we can go to Adam. Go ahead, Steve.
So I'm, I'm into thoughtful decision-making and sort of just as out of the blue, let's change something. I would then ask the question that would be nice to know before you say to do something. Um, so I, I think, I'd rather be slow and thoughtful rather than just jump and say, this looks easy. And then four days later, as Rob is tearing his hair out when he left up, carrying his little hair left out in his office going, how do I make this work? We forgot about that. Doesn't seem like a good thing to me.
All right. So Adam, you've heard the, is that from the board? Where do you stand?
Thank you. Uh, I think Howard's proposal is logical and, um, I think it was very likely to be a result of what we do, whether we do it tomorrow or a month from now or one time ever. For me, uh, I'm, in my position, I am trying to help us all build consensus towards where we need to go security-wise and, um, there, I think we're kind of in a sweet spot because there's some people that are upset with me for not moving quickly enough. There are other folks that are upset with me for moving too quickly. Um, and I think that I'm somewhere in the middle with, uh, this process. Um, the community council has spent a tremendous amount of effort, um, on security and planning and while, uh, they hold no specific liability as those of us at this table right here do, um, I think their voice is very important for the process. Um, I also think that we hired a, a professional consultant who was at Parkland High School in the days after the massacre that occurred there, content level experts that help us design our system. And I, I want to level set for the board that we're talking about a three-year implementation for the security recommendations we're going to receive. I've heard that timeline for the first time today in a conference call earlier today. Three years it's likely going to take us to get from where we are now to where we want to be because a lot of what has to change is how we operate as people within the school that we have and, um, the training that we need and, uh, and the very expensive things we're going to need to purchase. So, uh, while Howard, I think you're right on the money with those changes. I think there would be no downside to them. Um, I would be cautious about the optics of the board directing an incoming superintendent to take action before, uh, the security proposal that I'm planning to bring forward next month is even on the table, but, uh, security trumps all. And so I would not be offended if the board made that directive in my favor. I just want to be thoughtful about, we're very close to a year-long conversation culminating a month from now. And I don't want to give any foothold for criticism that any of us are moving out of sync with the other.
Okay. Any other comments? David?
I move that we table this motion that Howard made until next month, till the next meeting, to May, to May, whatever the date of the meeting.
Well, we have a motion, we have Howard's motion on the table already with a second. Motion on the table. Yeah. And then Tim, you also want to add a bit of comment?
Uh, yeah, but that kind of goes away because, uh, well, no, I was going to ask the same thing. I was going to ask for an answer to my question, but I'm not going to worry about it now because it's kind of moved.
If we pass it through, yeah.
Yeah. If we pass it.
So, so David put a, a motion to table on the table right away. So we have to vote on that.
A motion to table.
Yeah, a motion to table. Thank you. So, um, yeah, exactly. Thank you very much. So, uh, all those in favor of tabling this motion?
I don't think. A motion is.
Yeah, there's no discussion for motion to table.
We have some discussion.
We can, sure. Sure.
The, the one thing that really worries me is that we have visitors parking in the back.
Yep.
And once they go and park there, we have no control of their group. We don't know if they go inside that building or in this building. That was part of this whole discussion. Having the teachers out back gives us better accountability for the teachers, but it also takes the visitors away from the back and puts them in the front. With signage, bringing them in the front door where Linda Conley is, we have better control of those visitors. That was part of that, that discussion. That's why I, I just don't agree with you.
Okay. So let me, let me, let me just jump in with my own comments here and then we can, we can move forward. Um, I'll start by asking a question. Can you just let everybody know, when are we going to get the Safe Havens report again? When are we going to have visibility into that?
Uh, the May fourth, May, or May third meeting, whatever day of the week that is, will be when the board receives my recommendations and wants that report. But maybe I plan to have it out to the board sooner than that, um, for their review. Um, there may be parts of it that need to be redacted or only discussed in non-public because of security concerns. But my goal is that the board has plenty of time to have a report figured out for the meeting.
Okay. So we'll have plenty of time with the report. We'll have it at the May third meeting. When you go into that May third meeting, will you have, can you have for us very specific quick-hit recommendations that we can get after ASAP or nothing?
Yes, I directed Safe Havens to sequence their recommended steps that we take. Um, we'll be understanding that there will likely be some funds available at the end of our fiscal year, things that could be encumbered right away for that purpose as well as what are the things we can do immediately. So they're, part of what they are doing right now is creating that sequence of steps that we can get.
Okay.
So they're all recommended.
Okay. So my own personal comments are, since I've been the only one not to weigh in right now, is that we, we all understand that there's pressure to get security measures in this school sooner rather than later. The community is talking about it. We've been talking about it for a long time. I think Howard, your recommendation is, it's, it's practical, it's pragmatic. I think everybody here probably agrees with it from a, it's a logical perspective. One of the things we're going to need to do this year as a board outside of security is figure out a way to get all of the different stakeholders that, that want this school to improve in a number of ways. Administration, the board, community council, people at large, working together. And we need to take a very thoughtful approach to it without sitting our hands too long. The thing that I like about what Adam says is that by May third, we're going to know what Safe Havens wants us to do. At that time, I guess the only question I have is, is community council going to have had the opportunity to weigh in?
They, um, when I released the report to the school board, I plan to also release it to the, um, community council as well. Whatever's public will be public and so, including the, um, including community council.
Cause that's when their presentation is, right? On May third?
They are planning to present on May third, uh, regardless of whether they are able to review the Safe Havens report in advance.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, they're obviously hoping to have the report as soon as possible and to respond to it, but. to it. But in the meantime, they're preparing their responses that they've been voting on all year. And I think one of them is contingent upon the Safe Havens report, so.
Okay.
And then as soon as their report is done, that will be sent to Adam as well prior to the May 3rd meeting.
Okay. All right. So we have, we have a motion to table. We've had discussion. Any other discussion on the motion to table? No? All right. So having said that, let's call for a vote. This is on the motion to table, Howard's motion, all right? Those in favor of tabling until May, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed? Two opposed. The ayes have it. We'll table Howard's motion until May 3rd. Okay. Rob, you want to finish up your principal report?
Mr.?
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
A few months ago, I think it was a few months ago, I sent an email to both you, Adam and Rob, about using some Bean Foundation money that was available for special things, if you will. And my, my idea was to put it into a, an award for a teacher who made best use of the technology in the school, not just the technology school, but in particular the one-to-one computing mechanism. And I want to know if I could follow through on that or follow up on that with the Bean Foundation, with our administrator, to see if it's something that's, that you're interested in. Otherwise, I'll just drop it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up on that and get back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yes.
One other question, go back to safety and security regarding lockdown drills. We are going to have a non-public, right?
Yes.
Okay. I got some questions I'd like to have. If there's a report that we're, we can be biased as to how in the non-public, what really went on in the lockdown drills that occurred the last couple of months.
Very great. Thanks.
We'll go later tonight.
Hmm?
We'll go later tonight.
Yeah, 15 minutes, whenever we go to non-public.
We go to non-public?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Rob. I appreciate the report. Next up is the community council report. Mitchell, what do you got for us?
So community council recently finished our list of recommendations for our eventual security recommendation, which will be presented next month. As Adam said, we don't have the Safe Haven report yet and we hope to compare that to our list and add or remove some items depending on what they say. We are also in discussion for a proposal to wait the GPAs at Sohegan. And we have some proposals coming up, but our elections for next year's executive members will be happening in the next month. So we don't anticipate much else happening this year.
Any questions for Mitchell?
Wayne? That was one of my discussions, weighted GPAs. Where are we? Just a conversation or what, what is the conversation?
Yeah, so right now, I believe that we're waiting for the people that brought the proposal to talk to some people in guidance and see how this would affect actual transcripts and see how this would affect people applying for scholarships. Those are mostly our concerns, I think, at this point. And I think that right now, we're just waiting on that to come back to us. And Amy has some.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, at the last council meeting, we discussed having Christine Landrell also come to talk about how the, how the weighted GPA would intersect with competency-based learning. So I did ask executive if they would consider having Christine come on Monday, and Christine is available. So I think tomorrow, when you guys have your executive, you'll discuss that. So she's, she's set aside time to come Monday to address community council.
Wayne?
Is, is this motion or consideration all or nothing thing for, or will students have the option to be weighted or non-weighted?
I think that if this was implemented, it would be for all students, although it would, it wouldn't show up in their grades. It really only affects their GPA, which would be more for when it's sent to colleges or submitted for applications. So when it's on their transcript, I think it would also be weighted. But it would be for everyone just so that we don't have to figure out who wants to do what and it, because that would take a while and add more burden to guidance and whoever's figuring that stuff out.
Any other questions for Mitchell? David?
I just, for clarification, Mitchell, does that mean there's two sets of books in the grade point average department here, meaning one with weighted grading and the other one with non-weighted grading?
At this point.
And so for colleges, they get the weighted grading and for non-college students, they get another grading?
So I think that it would just sort of be for everyone in the school that they would wait the grades. At, to my knowledge, they wouldn't try to split it at all because it would just be too much hassle to separate those things. If, if you can clarify, I can.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, sure.
So, so you're asking, would it be, would you have separate transcripts? Or, I mean, I think the proposal is to wait certain courses, to add weight to certain courses. So say, for example, AP classes and honors classes. So the GPA would just be calculated adding that additional weight. And that would be on the transcript.
What I thought I said, I thought Mitchell said that there's essentially two grade point averages that are computed and essentially if, there is no class rank, I realize that, but two grade point averages, one would be a weighted grade point average and the other would be a non-weighted grade point average.
Yeah.
The weighted grade point average is used for college admissions, what the school would send out in that case. Then I asked, what would the non-weighted grade point average be used for at all?
I think they would probably, I'm guessing, I mean, none of these details haven't worked out, but I'm guessing that you would have both GPAs on the transcript. Because you would still need to have an unweighted GPA. But none of those details have been worked out. So, but I believe that that's what the proposal was.
Yeah, what I meant more was that they would have to have the base GPA so that they can add the, the points to it, depending on whether or not you're in honors course or an advanced course. But I don't think that they would really be keeping around the unweighted GPAs because if everyone is on the same system, there isn't really much need to keep those other GPAs around. And it's just a lot of things to keep track of.
Sorry, background. Any questions? Because there are high schools that offer both, that here is weighted, here is unweighted. It's two columns of a spreadsheet. It's not very complicated. That's, that's why I asked the question. So for those that insist on having an unweighted GPA, it's there. For those that want a weighted GPA, it's there. That was the, that was the first question. It's, it's happening in other places.
We can bring that up as a point in our discussion.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay.
And, and as always, members of the public and board members are welcome to come to community council meetings and the agendas are put out.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mitchell. Appreciate it. Committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports that they want to discuss this evening? Tim?
As Adam mentioned, you know, I met last week with Dick Miller. I'm not going to go into stuff that he already sent to us, which was, we had a lot of discussion around transition, transitioning to the new lady and some of the factors that we thought were important and whatnot in that. But we also talked about, you know, how is the turf working? He says it's working really well, especially allowing spring teams to get out onto the playing, that playing surface, yeah, quicker while the front fields are drying and whatnot. He did talk about how, and maybe, maybe we can up till these next two points into the strategic 2.0 plan if it, if it fits in there. He was talking about point-of-use sheds. So like where, you know, field hockey plays have field hockey-specific stuff right there locked away for their use, you know, lacrosse, track, whatever. So things are all jammed into one or two rusty old containers. And we've got some nice point-of-use sheds there. So again, without knowing what the cost impact of that is, it's premature to recommend that action. But I think it'd be something good to look at from a 2.0 perspective, as well as, and I haven't had a lot of personal experience in this area, which is probably a good thing, and that is going down into the boys locker room, which I hear is dismal at best. So that should be something, hopefully, that's being looked at as well in the 2.0 plan. So it would be great to get that to a high standard where, you know, the teams that utilize it, apparently the girls locker room is much better at shape. But, you know, the teams that utilize it from a Sohegan perspective are proud to be part of a sports team, you know, and it has a clear message, clear messaging from, of the school as well instead of, I don't even know what you want to call it. Use whatever adjective you want, but it's not good.
Nothing.
Yeah, instead of, you know, shambles that is today.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Any questions?
Question on that?
Yep.
So I think it was two years ago, there was $75,000 allocated for a storage facility, which would encompass included all the things everybody wanted.
Yep.
And then at last, after the money was allocated, it was a decision we didn't need it. So now the idea comes up again because we need it.
Yeah, I don't think it was a decision that we didn't need.
And so the board didn't make that decision?
Pardon?
The board didn't make.
No, no, no. I 100% agree with that. What I'm saying is, I don't think it was somebody saying we don't need. I think what happened is there was, at that point, the talks about doing, and I can't remember what pillar it fell under, but about revamping a lot of the, the infrastructure of the school and that would kind of be encompassed in that area. So I believe that's kind of that, what happened to that project, if you want to call it that. So now it's being looked at or should be looked at again.
Okay. Howard, then we're going to move.
We have three months before we lose the athletic. And I propose that we have him come in and give us kind of a state of the union of where we stand. You know, we had a new activity handbook, which detailed that we're going to have evaluations. I don't know if those have ever been done. So if we have the athletic director come in and give us an idea of where we stand before we get to next one, we know where to go.
Not a bad idea. Discuss it at the next, the next meeting. Okay. Thanks for that suggestion, Howard. In light of, in light of the fact that we're getting on in time a little bit and if there are no additional questions? Yeah, that's going to be in public comment. We're just going to have to, we're just going to have to. Any other committee reports?
Before we move to public comment, going once?
Going twice? Sold. Okay. Now we'd like to invite the public up for comment. Lisa.
As the FY19 Advisory Finance Committee Chair, I am publicly registering my disappointment at the lack of regard for the relationship shown between the Sohegan Cooperative School District School Board and the AFC on the night of the Sohegan deliberative. I realize this is some water under the bridge, or actually snow under the bridge, but here we go. There were two dissenting opinion slides that called out the AFC in a negative way. The first said the AFC used data incorrectly. This is false. The AFC and school board were looking at different aspects of the same data. At no time after receiving our analysis in December, did the dissenting voices reach out to our committee as a whole or in part to discuss, question, or make comments. The other slide appropriately mentioned we recommended the removal of money for security and safety upgrade. However, the slide incorrectly stated it was the full cost. Because we don't know what the full cost. In fact, months ago, when asked by the AFC where the executable plan was and how this money was to be spent, the board was unable to answer those questions, which is why we recommended removing it. In subsequent comments that night, the impression was freely given that AFC was responsible for removing the money. There was no attempt by the dissenters or other board members to make clear to those attending or listening to the meeting that the vote to remove the money was made by the school board, as is the rule of law in New Hampshire. My greatest concern is when a standing member of the school board implies through word or deed that a contributing committee to the process is misleading the public or, in this case, willfully and irresponsibly jeopardizing the safety of our community, doubt and mistrust is cast on the whole process. As you all know, the AFC is made up a group of volunteers who this year in particular have spent countless hours going through the budget with a fine-toothed comb. For those board members who sent silently, again, I say I'm disappointed. For the dissenting voices to impugn the character and the goodwill of those who have freely given their time in a public forum without trying to address the issues and disagreements in prior board or committee meetings is unconscionable. If I'm asked to be on the AFC again next year, I look forward to the AFC and the school board working together and will hopefully have a more amicable and respectful relationship.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else from the public? No? Okay.
Jim?
Yes.
I'd like to say some, and something in response to that. We were told a few moments ago that we were not invited to their meetings because there were one, one too many meetings. This was a difficult process. And I was not aware that the school board necessarily needed to reply or respond to the advisory finance committee. They made their recommendations. And as one of the members that dissented, I made my recommendations. So, and I don't want to get into the back and forth on this. I offered more than once to sit down and let's talk about the discrepancy, if you will. And that didn't happen. But this is what I'm hoping. Let's hope that it'll be better with you representing the board next year versus this year coming here.
I will do my very best. Lisa, if you could keep your comments to 30 seconds.
Just to rebut, I didn't say anybody was invited. It was my bad. I wasn't really clear who the board member was and I didn't follow up on that. On the flip side, it's publicly notified meetings. I'm everywhere. People know how to get in touch with me. Many of you have my cell phone. You all have my email address. A simple reach out from that to me would have worked as well. But I never said people aren't invited. The question that was asked was, do we need a board member? And I said, meh. But in thought through the meeting, yeah, I think it would be beneficial. All of the personnel changes and when we added the money saying we wanted to remove at the end, had a board member been there, they would have been able to field those questions, in particular that Amy had about where's this money coming from and why is it now? So that would have been beneficial to have a board member there. I dropped the ball on that and I apologize for that.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda? Tim?
Second.
Amy?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, actually, any discussion? All right, sorry, get it. So let's take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as written? Say yea.
Yea.
And any nay? Zero. All right, seven zero. Okay, moving on. Presentation and reports. Senior project presentation. And by the way, I am so sorry for making you wait so long. way, I am so sorry for making you wait so long.
here, and my senior project is on school safety and security, something that we've
No, that's okay. Don't worry about it.
Oh.
actually been talking about tonight. So for my EQ, it is, "At what point does a school feel like they are fully prepared and safe?" And I've decided to focus my senior project on school safety and security, because it's always been something that I've been aware of. And recently, there has been a rise in school violence around the United States, and so that's why I've decided to focus on something that we can do to be proactive about it. So for my applied piece, it was taking an approximately three-hour online training course through the Alice Training Institution. Alice was founded by a former SWAT officer named Greg Crane. He, Crane, Crane developed Alice in response to the nineteen ninety-nine Columbine High School massacre, where two students killed thirteen people and injured over twenty. Alice offers in-person group training, like Adam actually went to, and online individual ones, where was like, one of the ones I completed. And then the Alice program is broken down by five, it's like an acronym, so A stands for alert, L stands for lockdown, I stands for inform, C stands for counter, and E stands for evacuate. So the first response in the Alice training is alert. Alert is the first notification of danger. Many survivors didn't know that they were actually in danger, and it's important to recognize that danger and then being able to have a speedy response to that danger. Once the alert is recognized and accepted, the best action can be taken. Denying the danger can lead to limited survival options, and being able to understand, when you hear certain noises in the school, to think, "Oh, that might not have been just a locker slamming or something falling," and being able to understand what those noises are can definitely allow people to be alert. Because I know, definitely for me and for a lot of other students, if I was in one part of the main building and heard something down the hall, I wouldn't think that, "Oh, this could be something that it's, just something that's not normal." The second response is lockdown, and when armed intruder situations happen, they're typically looking for fast and easy targets. With an enhanced lockdown system, it slows the intruder down and allows for a semi-secure place for survival decision-making. Steps include securing the door with a zip tie or a belt. It includes barricading the door with objects, with books, with desks, and spreading out around the room, not cornering in one little section, because spreading out actually makes it harder for the intruder to aim, because a lot of them coming in aren't trained in how to shoot properly. So spreading out allows it to make it harder for them, and then it allows everyone to prepare for a plan of what they want to do in case something else happens, or prepare for a plan to evacuate. And Alice always recommends the lockdown when you cannot, when you're in the immediate The next response is to inform. In dangerous situations, knowledge, knowledge is key, and information can end up saving lives. With that being said, information should only be passed along when it's safe to do so. Ways to include, include verbally over the phone, over a PA system like what we have here, radios, like walkie-talkies that you see most of the administration having, or mobile technology. A great way to inform is setting up a system, a notification system, where typically through an app on a cellphone, where an alert can be sent out to all students. So if you're sitting in a main billing classroom and something happens in the annex, you can get a note on your phone that says, "Be aware, there's something happening." I know a lot of college campuses have it, and that was actually a big thing in the Virginia Tech massacre. When a student came on one part of campus, they got notifications saying that there was an active intruder in this building, and they were allowed to lock down and take their steps to be cautious of what was going on. And when informing, it is important to recognize the key factors, and to be observant, and to know what information to pass along. The second-to-last response is to counter. This should only be used as a last resort, and if the individual and intruder are in the same area. The goal is to distract and disrupt the thought process of the intruder, and it should always be used as a last resort. The primary response that Alice recommends is to evacuate, is to spread the amount of space between you and the armed intruder. But in a case when you have, when you're in an immediate area and you need to do something, they also recommend to counter. That counter works because of how humans react automatically in unexpected stimuli, like when someone walks into a room and you throw a stapler at them, they're not really expecting it. So ways of distracting the intruder includes throwing objects, like staplers, books, spraying fire extinguishers, because it brings out the white, and then they get kind of confused and stuff. And then to yell and to do rapid movements, because a lot of armed intruders aren't really expecting to walk into a room and have all these students start doing, throwing stuff at them, spraying them. They're kind of expecting everyone to be passive, because everyone is typically terrified. And then another is the swarming technique that you watch a lot of the Secret Service do, when someone comes into a room with the president, that you kind of throw objects at them, and then a group in numbers, you rush towards the intruder. This is typically only recommended with older students, because you don't really, it's not really safe to have elementary students such to do that. And it is important to know that countering is always a personal decision, and that in these situations, all actions are justified. And then the last response is to evacuate. Evacuating is always the preferred response, and seizing any opportunity to escape is key. Evacuating puts distance between the individual and the intruder, which allows for increased survival chances. It's important to take advantage of any opportunity to evacuate. Best practice evacuation is to plan in advance and take any action necessary to evacuate, where a lot of students, I know prior to taking this, I didn't know how to successfully break a window, where you're actually supposed to break it from the top corner, and then all the glass will fall, rather than throwing something straight into the middle of the window. And I know probably a lot of other students would just think to start throwing stuff at the middle, and it wouldn't break successfully. And then also how to drop from a two-second-story window successfully, where you break the window, and then you get out, and you lower yourself, and you land on your balls of your feet, and then you tuck and roll, where some kids will probably start jumping out of the second-story window, which is something you really want to avoid. And then evacuating is always the first priority to what you want to do. So why learn this? Learning about how to be proactive and prepared in an armed intruder situation can ultimately save lives. These events are unpredictable, and being prepared is important. I hope you all found this informational, and thank you for allowing me to present my findings here and a part of my senior project.
Thank you, Katerina. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Your name is Katerina, right?
Yeah, that's my name.
Katerina. Kat. Thank you, Kat. Any questions for Kat?
Yeah, so first of all, great presentation.
Thank you.
Really informative. I think the Alice acronym is pretty cool. Do you have any plans to get that out to the student body, or is that part of your senior project, or is that some future thing?
That currently, no, but after presenting here, I kind of feel like that would be really important, just to let kids be aware. So maybe I might, at the end of the tours, as the year is winding down, maybe do a class forum for each grade, or something like that. I am gonna put out a survey to the student body, just because I know at the beginning of the year, when cameras were being put, when the idea of cameras being put in, a lot of kids in my advisory said that they hated cameras, and that they never wanted them in the school. And then after Florida, a lot of kids came back and said, "I don't feel safe at South Heagan." So I just, I'm gonna put out a survey to see what, how the students are feeling, because I find interesting that they didn't want cameras at the beginning of the year, and then say they don't feel safe at the end of the year. So that's my plan to further that.
Great. Any other questions?
Who's your outside expert?
My outside expert is Mo Candy. He's actually the executive director at NASRO, which is the National Association of the School Resource Officers. So I spoke on the phone with him in January.
Great. I have one question.
Yeah.
Did you happen to present this to community council?
I did not, no.
How come?
I don't, I just kind of focused it here, rather than community council.
Yeah. You guys should talk.
(laughing)
Thank you very much. Is there no other questions? Any other questions for, no? Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, Amy.
Have you talked to Kelly at all?
Kelly Druskal?
Yeah.
I have not, no.
Yeah, you might as well talk to her, because I know she has been training in this.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, there's different protocols that are being discussed at the school, so...
Yeah, it's a good, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. We were supposed to get SAP presentation. Yes, Christine, anywhere.
Yeah, I'm here. So we're having some technology issues with the way Adobe opens the PDF, and I don't think it's readable on this version, so Rob's running to get an adapter so he can plug my computer in. So hopefully, oh, there he is. Hopefully, he has one.
Can you leave HDMI?
Yeah, I only have DVA. Do you have the HDMI?
I have one, too.
Oh, do you?
(inaudible).
Adam, I'll share this review, so you can access it if you're logged in.
Does your computer have the connector to HDMI connector?
It looks like this on that end, and then I can see my on the other.
Any USB?
No.
Yeah, I had to buy, I got a new iPhone, I had to buy the Domo, just to buy this thing connected with the other night.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy. And I need one for the counter.
Well, yeah, like lighting.
Yeah.
Cause they took, they took the earphone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I plug it in?
Can we do credit card payments quickly?
She took it with her.
So, if you guys don't mind, while Christine is setting this up and getting these slides together, if we could move to discussion on credit card payments?
Yeah.
Okay, Adam?
I can introduce this quickly, and if the board has discussion, we can have it, or we can move quickly through it. Either way, it's up to the board. But essentially, we want to be able to start accepting credit card payments from parents for things like student activity fees, field trips, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We already do that for school nutrition services purposes, but this is an expansion of that, and we would be looking for a board motion. Hopefully, we got, hopefully.
Do we have a motion?
No, I just got a question.
Question.
Have you gone through PCI certification on credit card acceptance?
We're doing it through our bank.
So the, so how they, what does that mean? Is the bank gonna have a terminal here, or what? How's that gonna work?
Yes. Yes. Well, well, yes, we're talking about getting a terminal here. We're also, one, one part of this is putting a link on the school website that would direct them to the secure payment option, which is authorize.net.
Through a third party.
Not sure, I mean, you're gonna do it through a third party?
Yes.
And they guarantee this PCI certification, because that's, that's a big sticky point.
Yes, that they've, they've told us yes. They're, and part of that is, they also have this Omni-Shield, which protects us with the data.
Isn't that just a, like an insurance policy?
It is. It is. But they, but the, along with the, we're supposed to not have any issues getting access to the credit card applications and...
Okay, so if it runs through our internal backbone internet here, it will not get PCI certified. I can tell you that.
Well, no, this, this is just a link that will go to authorize.net, where people...
Directly?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
So I think it was Adam's email, or somewhere in the email documentation that we've received over the last week, where it talked about this, and, anyway.
It was in the packet.
Thank you. I know I read it somewhere. It talked about transaction fees and whatnot, so what, what's the cost to us? Hopefully, zero. And because if there are transaction fees, I would assume that they're gonna get swallowed up by the payer.
Yeah, so every, every credit card transaction has transaction fees that come out of it from the vendor's perspective, which in this case, were the vendors. So if we need to adjust fees so that we net, whatever, have to net from parents or whatever, yeah, there will be. Same thing with, when I put money in my school's lunch account on a very regular basis, there's always a couple of dollar fee that gets associated with that as well, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, this is a great idea, first of all. I love, yeah, we go this route, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not insured.
So you want us to, to add the fees to, for the, like, the parents to pay, and not absorb any of it?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Like school bucks for, for, it's like a dollar ninety-five for a transaction.
Steve?
So, I was looking at the fees, and Stephanie about it earlier, because they're, it's almost impossible, well, it's not impossible, but there are so many different combinations of the way you're gonna pay, that, and, and the fee is actually different for each one.
I saw that.
So we would, we'd probably wind up just sort of saying average transaction fee. And at town hall, they do that, when you go to pay your, you register your card, you can swipe, and a little sign in the distance says, "An extra two-point-one percent will be added as a transaction fee." So you can do that. And I, I sort of, I did, I did a sort of a worst-case calculation, and then turns out Stephanie did a more precise likely-case calculation on what the fees would cost us. And I'll, I'll give you the worst case, because it's slightly higher than her likely case. It's about forty-two-hundred dollars a year in transaction fees. And my thought was, I'd rather absorb those fees for the first year and see if we get people to encourage to get out of the cash business. It's worth, I think it's worth more to us to spend four thousand dollars on fees and get away from cash, than to recoup the exact cost of, of this additional service. The world is, in the end, gonna be credit cards. Cash is going away. So I would suggest not charging fees for the first year, seeing what the real fees were, and then making decisions in the future about, we want to try and find some average number that would recoup what we expect, we want to find some middle ground, where we split the fees half and half, so we don't discourage people weighing back the cash, or what do we want to do? I'd rather get data first, rather than start by discouraging people by laying more fees on top of what we're collecting. Just my opposing point of view.
And we can figure that out on your behalf.
So do we have a motion to approve this?
Well, in spite of what Steve just mentioned, who's paying, who's, who's currently, what's the plan for absorbing the fees? Is the district paying for it, or is the user paying for it?
Well, we, it gets taken out of what gets credited to our bank. Someone pays fifty dollars, there's gonna be a dollar seventy-two that gets taken out, and we end up with forty-eight-twenty.
That's not passed, huh?
Forty-eight-twenty.
We absorb it.
Correct. That's how it was with every credit card.
We would have to up our fees that we charge parents.
We would have to charge fifty-two dollars as opposed to fifty dollars if we wanted to. But I, I do think that the credit card companies do not allow you to make a precise, like, you can't, you cannot charge exactly the net amount.
Twenty-five percent more.
Correct.
You can't do that.
No, because they really don't know those upfront when people are transacting.
I think that's, frankly, I think that's something you should let us worry, or worry about here.
Tim?
No, I was just gonna make the motion.
Go for it.
That's the encouragement he's providing.
Please do. Make the motion, and we can move forward with the credit card payment plan, or whatever it's called.
Do we have a second?
Second.
so we don't discourage people weighing back the cash, or what do we want to do? I'd rather get data first, rather than start by discouraging people by laying more fees on top of what we're collecting. Just my opposing point of view.
And we can figure that out on your behalf.
So, do we have a motion to approve this? Well, in spite of what Steve just mentioned, um, who's paying, who's, who's currently, what's the plan for absorbing the fees? Is the district paying for it, or is the user paying for it?
Well, we, it gets taken out of what gets credited to our bank. Someone pays fifty dollars, there's going to be a dollar seventy-two that gets taken out, and we end up with.
That's not passed, huh?
Forty-eight, twenty-eight.
We absorb it.
That's how it is with every credit card.
We would have to up our fees that we charge parents.
We would have to charge fifty-two dollars as opposed to fifty dollars. But I, I do think that the credit card companies do not allow you to make a precise, like, you can't, you cannot charge exactly the net amount.
A point five percent more.
Correct.
You can't do that.
No, because they really don't know those upfront when people are transacting.
I think that's, frankly, I think that's something you should let us worry, or worry about.
Tim?
No, I was just going to make the motion.
Go for it.
That's the encouragement he's providing.
Please do. Make the motion, and we can move forward with the credit card payment. Plan, whatever it's called.
Do we have a second?
Second. Clarifying the question.
Yes, go ahead.
That includes having us pay for the fees?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
No further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Two.
Five to two.
Either way.
Uh, okay, next, let's go to the administrative fee for field, uh, usage.
Ms. Robb?
Yes, so, I, our contract with the town Amherst Rec Department is up June thirtieth, and so I've been talking with Craig about issues and how things are going, and one thing he brought up is related to the fee, the administrative fee. Currently, they take a fifteen percent fee. He is requesting a twenty percent fee because of the maintenance costs that they've been doing on all the fields. So, they're asking.
The maintenance cost on what's that thing?
They maintain the fields.
Oh, okay.
So, they're asked, and they maintain all the scheduling of the fields?
They don't maintain the fields. So, Sohegan.
No, not our fields.
They maintain the fields that are for Amherst.
They, right, right, right. But there's fees, the fees associated with, um, because there's, it, it, yes, it's Amherst and Sohegan, so that's what makes it confusing.
Right.
Um, Sohegan, so they administer the recreation fields. They do the scheduling of the fields.
Yes.
So, it's intensive. It's labor-intensive. We want to know if we can, we can up it to twenty percent for them.
Amy?
Yeah, so I was involved when this, um, contract was renegotiated, and originally, Sohegan wasn't, wasn't receiving any of the fees. Um, we were maintaining the fields, because the, to back up, the fields are all owned by the Amherst School District. So, there's a, a three-way contract. So, originally, a hundred percent of the fees for, um, that were collected for Sohegan's fields were going to town for the rec. And Sohegan wasn't getting any, any benefit of those fees, but was doing all the work of maintaining the fields. So, we renegotiated, especially in light of the turf field coming, um, where they would take fifteen percent of the fees to handle scheduling, but Sohegan would get eighty-five percent, um, of the fee because they were doing the work of maintaining the field. So, my concern is especially in light of, um, having to replace the turf field in ten years, that, that eighty-five percent that we're collecting is going towards replacing that. So, if we're going to give up another five percent, then I have some real concerns. Um, and we're actually doing the work. So, I understand they are scheduling, um, but they're technically not maintaining the field.
It is a different arrangement with the Amherst School District or the Amherst.
That's the Amherst. I'm talking Sohegan.
I know, I'm just, I'm pointing out the difference of why it might make sense to have a different fee schedule between the two.
And, and there is, because in Amherst, um, Amherst doesn't collect any of the fees. It's a hundred percent going to the town, and Sohegan, it's eighty-five percent going, Sohegan fifteen percent going to the town. So, that was all negotiated at the, renegotiated at the time of the turf field. Um, and that was done with, with Fletman and, um, Amherst Board Rep, Sohegan Board Rep, um, and Rec. So, I guess I'm one, you know, especially I know we're in the hole for replacing the turf field, so I would be very reluctant to agree to giving up another five percent, personally.
Anybody else? I echo that. David?
So, what, Stephanie, what is, sorry, goodbye.
No, go ahead.
What's the alternative, though? I mean, so, we don't want to pay the five percent, which is, you know, I fully in agreement with that, but what's the alternative? I mean, why, why do they think they need more? Because it's not going to maintain, it's not going to grass seed, I know that.
I think it's taking more time than they expected to do the scheduling, more labor-intensive. And I would say they're, they're not really scheduling enough to make money.
Right.
For the turf field, so we're kind of, that puts us in a lose-lose situation. So, we're not getting the fees, because we're in the hole, thanks to your good analysis, and now we're being asked to give up another five percent of what has been inadequate. So.
So, we've, we've heard your input, and we'll get back to you next minute.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. SAT results. Christine?
Yes. Um, sorry, Steve, stealing. Um, so these are the SAT, SAT results from last year, so April of twenty seventeen, and SAT is our statewide assessment for grade eleven students. Um, so, overall, for reading and writing, the evidence-based reading and writing section, um, this is our, uh, grade eleven students from last year, so our current grade twelve students. You can see our mean score was five sixty, which is significantly above the mean, um, score for the state. Um, we also report out a grade eleven benchmark, which the state does not report out. We're able to calculate that grade eleven benchmark ourselves, and eighty-eight percent of our students met the grade eleven benchmark, and since they are taking the assessment in eleventh grade, we feel like that's a pretty important number to share with all of you. Um, and we had eighty-two percent of our students meeting the grade twelve benchmark. So, in April of twenty seventeen, our eleventh grade students, eighty-two percent of them, were actually ready to enter a college-level, um, English course at that time. So, really strong results, and well above the state average of sixty-six percent. Um, then, um, yeah.
If we go back to that slide, what is this, four sixty and the four eighty?
Oh, sorry, so those are the, um, that's the cutoff, the mean, the, the scaled score cutoff for meeting that benchmark. So, um, eighty-eight percent of our students were at a four sixty or above.
So, my follow-up question to that is, how do they set that benchmark? Because that seems like an arbitrary setting, because the mean is five hundred, right?
No, no, it's a.
Mean of the SATs? I thought they set it at five hundred.
I don't believe so. They.
They do. One standard deviation is. Yeah.
Oh, that's what he's saying.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so typically, the way, um, standards are set on an assessment, and I'd have to look deeply into the SAT to confirm this for you, um, typically, you actually look at the content of the assessment, and you look at where you would expect your proficient or benchmark level to be, and then you determine what students would need to get on that, um, section to, um, get the number of questions correct that you would expect to see for that benchmark level. Does that make sense?
Well, a little bit, but.
Yeah, it's a standard-setting process.
In previous years, in sixteen, it was the Smarter Balance.
Yes, totally different scale.
Totally different scale. But they also set a benchmark for proficiency.
Yep.
Okay, and the previous years of that, it was kneecap.
Yep.
And they also set a benchmark for proficiency. How do we know those benchmarks are equivalent benchmarks?
They're not equivalent benchmarks. So, we really can't compare, and I'll speak more to that when we get to that slide. Um, but we can't really compare them.
And I will say, if I can jump in, Dave, um, on the College Board's website, these are their benchmarks for eleventh-grade students. So, this is the national norm for what the College Board says. If a student gets four sixty in, in reading and writing, and a five-ten in math, they're, they've met the nationwide eleventh-grade benchmark. It's slightly higher for college and career benchmark. There's also a tenth-grade benchmark and a ninth-grade benchmark.
Yeah. Yeah.
What is the max score?
Is it eight, eight hundred, right?
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
So, five hundred is the mean.
No, so, well, I, I don't know, the means, the mean depends on what norming group you're using.
Right. Originally, it was determined to be the mean, and then one standard deviation above the norm was six hundred, two standard deviations was seven hundred, and three standard deviations was seven hundred, uh, eight hundred, I'm sorry. And that's the way it was set originally, and now these things have been sliding all around because there's like a dumbing down of the same test that's happened. So, I can understand why the five-sixty, the four sixty, and the four eighty makes sense now, but it's still, it's still a variable that we don't have, that is not precise, is what I guess I'm asking.
Can we, can we, can I make a recommendation? Let's have, what I'd like to recommend is, let's have Christine go through her presentation. As questions arise, let's take notes, and at the end of the presentation, she can go back.
Mm-hmm.
Can you do that?
Yeah. Um. Is it not connected anymore? I'm really having bad luck. Oh, there it goes. Okay. Um, so this is our comp district data, so this is just looking at the districts we usually, um, compare ourselves to, um, either, you know, geographically or similar, um, high schools to ours. Um, and you can see that we're at, uh, there are eighty-two percent, we're right between Wyndham and Hopkinton, um, and, you know, right, uh, in the middle of our comp districts. And our math SAT results, again, the, um, scaled score you need to get to meet, meet benchmark, either grade eleven benchmark or grade twelve benchmark, in math is a higher scaled score than in the reading and the writing. Um, so our mean score for our grade eleven students last year was five thirty-nine. Um, and we had sixty-four percent of our students meeting the grade eleven benchmark. And again, that's not reported at the state level, um, so we don't have that information. And then the grade twelve benchmark, fifty-four percent of our students met the grade twelve benchmark, which means that fifty-four percent of our grade eleven students were actually ready to enter a college-level math course at the end of eleventh grade. And again, our comp district data, you can see where we fall, um, uh, really between Hollis and Exeter. And then, looking longitudinally, I think this is an important view, um, to really understand. This really goes into Dave's question about the different assessments. Every time you have a different assessment, you have to be really careful about comparing those assessments. So, in, um, twenty fourteen, we had the kneecap. That was aligned to old standards. And we had already changed our curriculum to align to the new standards, so that twenty fourteen kneecap score, um, is significantly lower than even the state average, um, because our alignment, we were teaching different concepts than what they were being assessed on. The twenty fifteen Smarter Balanced assessment was aligned to Common Core, and we had many more of our students meeting, um, proficiency levels on that assessment. But after just one year of Smarter Balanced, the state decided to move to the SAT. We were actually, uh, while we were frustrated with another assessment switch, we were actually really pleased with that, because students, um, care very deeply about their SAT scores. Um, it had always been a challenge with both kneecap as well as Smarter Balanced to really make students invest in that assessment, to really understand, uh, that it was important to our school, and it was reflecting, um, uh, back on, on them as students and, and what they had learned. Um, so students struggled sometimes, um, trying their best on those assessments, because they didn't see the value in them. So, we were pleased when we moved to the SAT, um, uh, but with the SAT, again, it was another change and hard to compare from assessment to assessment. Um, the SAT, while we moved from, um, old standards, then to new, more rigorous Common Core standards, with the change to the SAT, we're actually moving to a grade twelve benchmark. So, with each new test, the standard has actually increased. So, if you look, um, this is our reading, um, percent of students at benchmark and above, and again, for every assessment, that benchmark is a little bit different. Um, so for reading, um, we were significantly above the state average in twenty fourteen in kneecap, and again, the change wasn't as significant in the standards, while the rigor increased with Common Core, content wasn't being moved, because with English Language Arts, the curriculum, um, really builds each year. It's not different concepts, um, where it can be in mathematics, so very different. Um, there, the lack of alignment was not an issue on kneecap in reading. Um, again, our students, um, while we had less students reaching the proficiency level, that makes sense. This was a more rigorous assessment and a more rigorous benchmark to meet, meet for Smarter Balanced. And again, not only are these different assessments, they're different cohorts of students. So, we have to be really careful about comparing, uh, between them, which is why those dashed lines are there. Um, then in twenty sixteen, we moved to SAT, and still we had, uh, even though that's an even more rigorous assessment, um, we see that, uh, it looks like, uh, you know, while it is also a different cohort of students, students put a lot of stock in that assessment, and they were probably more likely to try their best, um, on that assessment. And again, twenty seventeen SAT, again, that, um, college career readiness benchmark, so grade twelve benchmark. Um, and while there's a little shift, um, in scores there, it's a different cohort, which, um, mainly, uh, probably, uh, was that, that change. Um, for math, um, as I mentioned, in twenty fourteen, our kneecap scores, we were significantly below the state average, and that's because we were teaching different concepts than what the test was actually testing. So, it's really hard to look at those scores and, um, gain any value from them, because it was a test that we had to have our students take, where we weren't even aligned to it. Then in, um, twenty fifteen, on Smarter Balanced, our students were really close to the state average, um, on that more rigorous assessment. Um, and, but again, Smarter Balanced kind of, um, students aren't thinking, hey, this is a really critical assessment for me to try my hardest on. We worked really hard with the students to get them to understand the importance of, the importance of that assessment. Um, but when we moved to the SAT, again, um, an even more rigorous benchmark, being a grade twelve benchmark, um, you see that our, um, scores are significantly above the state average, um, and in both years, in twenty sixteen and in twenty seventeen. So, uh, we've shared this with you before, but we've done a lot of work with our math program to align to new standards, um, and really more rigorous standards. Um, perhaps, uh, Professor Mahesh, Mahesh Sharma worked very closely with us, um, did a lot of work with all of our math teachers, um, to really help, um, uh, make those shifts and increase rigor. We implemented a new math resource, so a new math textbook, um, which has really allowed our teachers to focus not on making tests and worksheets as they had in the past when we didn't have a textbook, but to focus their time on collaborating with each other and talking about instruction, which has been a critical piece for us. And also participating in PACE, really looking at, um, students not just, um, uh, you know, uh, computing facts, but actually applying their knowledge, um, and through a more performance-based assessment. So, the last thing I wanted to share is our PSAT results from this year. So, in looking forward, our students just a few weeks ago, um, took the SAT, or again, our statewide assessment for grade eleven. Um, this is the current, um, grade eleven students and their PSAT scores from this fall. Typically, our students, um, perform a little bit better on the SAT than they do on the PSAT. And again, this is a grade eleven, um, benchmark on the PSAT that they're looking at. So, for reading and writing, eighty-five percent, so really strong number, eighty-five percent of our students met that PSAT grade eleven benchmark, and in math, fifty-five percent met that benchmark. Um, pretty similar to, um, how last year's cohort did. And we do anticipate our SAT scores, um, for this year either being similar or possibly a little bit higher than this. And again, these are, um, uh, so in looking back at PSAT results, um, they're usually a little bit higher on the SAT. Uh, the other thing we did, we also looked at our NWEA results, because we wanted to see, as our students move through our system, we're getting more and more students that had a Common Core-aligned math experience. So, in looking at our math scores, we've done a lot of work here at the high school to make changes and to make improvements, um, but we've also done a lot of work K-eight. And the students that are coming up into the high school are, we're seeing every year, they're more and more prepared, um, to even move faster through some of that content and to go deeper. Um, so we really wanted to look at our current grade nine and our current grade ten students and how they might compare on the SAT. You might remember last year, when I presented, I could only share with you the correlation with the ACT and NWEA. They just released this fall their linking study that actually links NWEA results with SAT. Um, the only challenge is, the way it links, um, it links grade nine results to SAT taken in the senior year. So, a little challenging. I did talk to NWEA about why they link that way, and, um, it, it was just a function of how many districts were willing to share their NWEA results and their SAT results with NWEA, uh, because they can't do this linking study without permission. So, they don't take our student scores unless we give them to them. Plus, we would have to supply SAT scores, and. to supply SAT scores, and many districts are reluctant to do that. We've never authorized NWEA, we've never participated in any of their linking studies, even though there's not student names linked to it, we've been hesitant to do that, as have many other districts. So most districts that did share were only willing to share the ninth grade, and many districts who shared, they only had SAT results from senior year, because when they started this linking study, many states had not yet gone to SAT as their statewide assessment, so they weren't taking it in eleventh grade, always. They had more comprehensive data in twelfth grade. So complicated answer, but for now, this is how they were able to do the linking study because of the data that they had. So this is the percent of students predicted to meet that college and career-ready benchmark or the grade twelve benchmark on SAT, but this would be by senior year. So if our students are taking it at the end of junior year, could be a tiny bit off, but still really strong results. Now, again, the current grade ten, I actually looked back at their grade nine and WEA results to compute that, just so that you're aware. So we're going back, you know, to look at the prior year's results. But in looking at them, they're really strong results. So we're hopeful that our SAT scores will continue to get stronger and stronger each year. And looking at it, you know, eighty-nine percent and ninety-five percent of our students predicted to meet the grade twelve benchmark in reading and writing, and sixty-seven and sixty-nine percent in math. Now, this might correlate a little bit more to that grade eleven benchmark, but it would will be interesting to see as these students take the assessment, our current grade ten, as they take it next year, where that falls, and it will give us a little bit of a better sense what we might be able to predict as our students are moving through.
Okay, questions? David, and then Tim.
So the, what I've noted in, in my looking at this as well, is that the proficiency level for reading and writing versus math is dramatically different in all grades throughout South Heagan High School, but they are not out of line in the middle school and in the lower school. In other words, the analysis that I've done says that the math proficiency and reading and writing proficiencies, I think it's reading actually, are basically in the eighty percentile all the way through middle, all the way through middle school, which were the grade seven and eight, are essentially the same kids that are moving on to freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior. But there's a disparity once they get to South Heagan at some point. Do we understand why that is?
So I would need to go back, it really depends on the cohort of students. We do typically perform even at the middle school level a little bit better in the reading and writing rather than the math, and that's a national trend, that's not just.
A little bit better, not that, that much different.
So the other thing, if you look at the, our comp districts and really look at the math, you know, percentage of students meeting benchmark is very different on math for all of our comp districts as well, you know, in compared to the reading. So in our comp districts, you know, many of them are in the high eighty percent of students meeting benchmark, where in math, we're really in the middle of, you know, seventy-five, seventy to seventy-five percent are our comp district. So it's a national trend, and also you have to remember that to meet benchmark, you're actually meeting a higher standard in math than you are in reading. So when you create that higher standard in math, you're going to have less students meeting it in math also, because this is college and career readiness.
Tim.
As a parent of a junior, I should probably know the answer, but when, so they just took the SAT.
About two weeks ago.
When are they going, when are the results going to come out?
We won't get them till that summer, Kathy, to early fall.
Oh, wow.
Right? So it does, yeah, and I can certainly present this earlier in the year to the school board. It seems that budget time gets really busy, and that's about when we have the data and can process it. Yeah, it's usually very late summer or early fall, and we do like to meet with our teachers to review the data to be able to share any insights or perspective. So often, the earliest we could get to you is, you know, October or so, and that's right when we get deep into budget. So we can certainly present earlier, though.
Maybe an abbreviated presentation.
Yeah.
Dwayne.
I guess looking at the schools that we're comparing ourselves to, all the things that we're doing, and Dr. Sharma was here, that was what, four or five years ago?
Yeah, about five to six.
So how long, how long was it supposed to take before we were supposed to see the results?
That's a really hard question to answer. The results, often, so first, we had implementation of Common Core, and anytime you implement something new, there's often a little bit of an implement, implementation dip, and then you'll see an increase in scores. So we had Professor Sharma here with us actually six and even seven years ago, because he was here over the course of about two years. And then, you know, about three years after that, we implemented our textbook. The challenge is, it's not, it's not just what we can do here at South Heagan, it's how prepared those students are when they come to us, too. And while we can work really hard here if the students aren't coming, if they're well below grade level when they're arriving here, which is not the case, especially now, but if they, as they were moving up through the grades, we were transitioning here, but we were also transitioning at other grade levels. So those, many of the students over the past few years didn't get a fully Common Core-aligned experience. So they were coming where we were playing catch-up to try to get them to meet these more rigorous standards. So it's really hard to say exactly when would we see a change. I do think that the students who had a Common Core-aligned experience from the beginning, I would think that we would see a bit of a jump at that point.
Okay, I have two other questions. The other was, all instructors using textbook, all instructors using the same textbook?
Yes.
Or working in the concept.
Yes.
Okay, and then the last thing is, of the schools that we're comparing ourselves to, what is it they're doing right? Are we even looking at their curriculum? Because one of the things that we do that's different is what, grade?
Yes.
And we insist on that, and the scores are just incrementally better from year to year. What are other schools doing, and at what point are we going to get, where do we want to be, I guess, is the question? Are we satisfied where we are, or are we going to be better than that?
So I wouldn't want to answer that alone. I feel like we still have room for improvement to be setting that benchmark. I feel like that's a group decision for us to be making and saying, you know, where, where we want to, to be.
All right. I have a question. Can I ask you? Please. My question is, and I try to be as sharp on the question as possible, it is, when Sharma came in and made his recommendation on implementing the math curriculum the way it was made, having been on the Amherst School Board, I know it was a very specific recommendation, and the request to implement was very specific. Was that math curriculum implemented at the high school with the same fidelity, one hundred percent?
So I'm going to have a hard time answering that, because I came right after Sharma worked with our schools. So my understanding was about the work, and Amy might be able to chime in, too, the work he did was around instructional techniques and how to foster math discourse in your class. The recommendations he was making were more around some changes in our courses and our course sequence and alignment to standards. And we have made those course changes, and we have fully aligned to standards. So our courses are tightly aligned to the integrated pathway of the Common Core State Standards.
So the question is then, maybe it's the instructional technique. I guess what I'm trying to say is, the culture at the high school is very strong. So my question is, is was there full adoption of what the math, the implementation of the math program recommendation, was there full adoption at the high school with that? The teaching techniques, the course alignments, the whole thing? Was that, was the whole apple swallowed, I guess, is the question I'm asking?
I feel it was, and there's another layer, because when we move to college preparatory math, our textbook, there are a whole set of instructional practices along with that text, which align to some of the practices Sharma outlined, but there are additional practices. And if you walk into any math classroom, it's amazing, and Rob can speak to this, you see those same practices across math classes, no matter what course you're in.
So having to do a little research, because you're asking a question of somebody who may or may not have been here and somebody who's teaching English. And if you, if you back, I remember they were, yeah, so if you back up a little bit with what Christine is saying and kind of go backwards from here, and I can, you know, certainly talk to Ann to get a yes or no, but I'd be very confident that it's yes, and outlining how it started then to get to this point now where they're literally mining individual questions and how they were asked and the language and the meanings and questions. So big short answer, yes, and I'd be happy to really get a confirmation about the history, but where we're at now makes me feel very comfortable that it started with fidelity along the way.
Adam, two questions.
Yeah, I have two comments I'd like to make. First is, I want to recognize that these are largely achievement scores that we're talking about. When, there are some cities in our state that would do anything and give anything to have, to be the lowest number on that board right there, forty-two percent. It's not because they're not working very hard as schools and doing the right things, but because the students in their schools have certain abilities and talents as they arrive. We've reached out to Hanover in the past, who was setting the trend for the state, and they have said to us, I don't want to paraphrase, but as I understood it, we don't think we're doing anything all that special, but the students we have are unbelievably bright. And on average, we have professors and doctors and other folks in the community. So I want to remember the context that these are achievement scores, not growth scores, about how students have grown over time. Second thing I'd like to mention is, number two on that list up there right now, I happen to have some familiarity with. I received a communication from the Wyndham School District after they received these SAT scores in the fall, crediting some work that I have a part in, realigning our K-12 curriculum structure so that we had a math expert who was an administrator, K-12, that worked with teachers, K-12, in aligning curriculum and coaching teachers and instructional practices related to math. We had another one for science, English, and social studies. And they credit that change in philosophy in Wyndham with a huge bump and improvement in math scores that they had. But there was someone who K-12 was aligning things and making sure that our vertical piece worked, and also giving teachers direct instructional coaching on how they could be more effective in their classroom. So two points, remember these are achievement scores and indicative of the clientele in their respective districts. Number one, and number two, one strategy that seems to work is providing teachers with direct coaching feedback on their instructional practice on a routine basis, like not a punitive model, not an accountability model, but a coaching model.
David, and then Amy.
So one way to look at the data is to line them up, one to eighty-nine or one to ninety-two, whichever, whatever number of high schools you want to believe there is.
Keep out the charter school.
Well, yeah, you have to, yeah, but there are some that just don't give their data. So the last three, for example, just don't give their data. And over the last three years, or the last two years, with using SATs, which you'd think would be relatively consistent, right? Our standing has always been around the fifteen to eighteen number. So we're fifteenth or eighteenth in the state in terms of proficiency. And that's not saying that, you know, like, I don't know, I can list all the fifteen ahead of us or fourteen ahead of us, but it's not saying that they're better or worse school, they have better or worse students. It's basically just, we think we have a good set of students in this school, I think we do. If you look back at our proficiency numbers in lower grades, they're all at the top of the state. They're all at the top of the state. It just so happens that when we get into this grade level, something happens. At least that's what I can see here, in the data that I see. So our standing dropped substantially, and maybe those schools are doing something better. And that's the problem that I'm having with it, actually following up on Dwayne's sort of question there. What are they doing that's better than us? You know, why are they doing, why do they have, why can they be in the top five and the top ten consistently, and we can't be?
So maybe the administration thinks that's a rhetorical question?
I'm happy to, well, so, what I, I worry about making generalizations without having the data in front of me, which is why I'm hesitant to comment, but I think it would be, I would really need to look back at our results from Amherst and Mount Vernon and look at how they compare statewide. I have the comparison to our cohort districts, but I didn't do the complete state analysis, so I'd really have to look at that, to see that. So it's hard for me to comment on because I don't have that data in front of me.
We need to comment on that, because the cohort that we're looking at is consistent from seventh through twelfth grade. They're the same kids, you know, plus reminds of a few kids moving in and out. Look at that. Do the analysis yourself and see where they, the seventh and eighth graders stand, and then where our juniors and seniors stand. The relative, on a relative basis. I think you'll find that it's a little startling.
Amy.
So, yeah, a couple of things. So my understanding is that these, the results, this cohort of students are the current twelfth graders, right? And they have been, had the benefit of the Math and Focus Program for four years?
That sounds about right.
Okay.
Yes.
So they were in seventh grade when it started. So my expectation would be that as students move through, these scores should get better and better because they will have had.
More time.
More time. So, so the current fifth graders have had it since they were in first grade, right? So that's, that's one comment. The other comment, I wanted to talk about what Adam brought up, and this is something that we spent a lot of time discussing during the Teacher Leader Effectiveness and Evaluation Program, is we didn't really have a way to bring in content knowledge when we were evaluating teachers. So because we just didn't have the model. So we had administrators going in and evaluating teachers who, you know, Rob can go into a math class, and he can evaluate on tautogee and, you know, engagement and, and other things on top of classroom, but he probably can't really give a great review of, right, of, you know, Ann Swift's AP Calculus class. So I have, have had several conversations with Adam about this over the past year, and I think it's something we really need to seriously consider when we look at realigning. And Bethany Bernasconi was the.
Six twelve.
Six twelve science administrator. So she was not only the coach, she was actually an administrator. So it's a lot different than having a coach go in and give you information when you have someone who's evaluating you. It just has, it has a different take. So I think I would like us to consider that model at some point.
You will be.
Thank you.
That's a good jumping off point, just in the interest of time, I don't want to shut down the discussion, I want to let Rob speak as well. But I'm very concerned about these math scores, me personally. And I'm concerned about it because I spent so many years on the Amherst School District, and I remember the scores there, and I saw them rise over the course. And to have them rise and not continue to rise here, when you tell me that Sharma's recommendations were implemented with fidelity, and that the teaching techniques were implemented with fidelity, in the business world, this becomes screaming at me like, execution, 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 there's an execution problem. This is screaming execution. So I, I'll, I'll put on the table that I think, and I know we got, everybody's got fallen asleep, but I think that this needs to be a discussion in May. This is so critical that I, I, I'm going to make my own motion. I don't even think we have to go that far, but just to say, we need to have a discussion in May on what recommendations the administration is going to make. At least, at least come back to us and say, this is what we think the issue is, and this is what we think potential solutions might be, option one, option two, option three, because this has been an ongoing year-after-year issue, and I think that in discussions we've had on the board, here as a board now, or a copy and other things, our expectation is that, and I don't think we'll ever be Hanover, but Wyndham, Bedford, seven, I mean, at twenty-one thousand dollars per kid, I would expect that number to be in the seventies. at twenty-one thousand dollars per kid, I would expect that number to be in the seventies. Steve.
I don't know why you just said you didn't see the scores increasing. I saw that slide, but it was presented, it says the scores are increasing.
Well, I mean, I mean, what I'm talking about, I'll clarify.
So, I want to be clear, the scores have not gone down, they have been going up. They may not have gone up, I think we all agree, not as much as we want them to, but they have gone up. So, the first thing we got to throw away is we're getting worse. We start getting better as fast as we want to be.
Well, the scores have gone up in, in two years, and you can't compare it to S-Backing, you can't compare it to NECA, and I disagree with you. Because I've seen, I've seen this cohorts of kids come through the Amherst School District, and we are not seeing the type of increases in our math performance that you would expect to see. I've only been living that for seven years. Would you agree or not agree, Amy?
I, I would.
You saw it.
I would, I would like to see the scores increase at a greater rate. And I don't know how we do that. I think Adam's suggestion is, is a, an important step. And I guess I would like to hear more information on what we can do to move along.
Yeah. It's nobody's fault, it's just, the, the numbers are what they are, and I think we need greater insight into it. And that's what I'm hearing from the board. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
Can I go one step further on that, Jim?
Yeah.
It's, it's the relative standing amongst the schools in New Hampshire. That's really what I'm concerned about. Because Steve is right, the scores have been inching up. But everybody else has been inching up quite, quite faster. And we've maintained our standing at around fifteen to eighteen for many, many years. We should be, you know, our, our demographics of our town, you look at the other towns that are below or above us, the demographics of our town, we should have, we should be in position to be number, somewhere between sixth and one. Maybe, maybe Dresden and Hanover is a little bit exceptional, and I probably would agree with Adam, that's probably true. But we ought to be at the top five or ten, easily.
Any other comments? Steve.
I'll, I'll also agree, we all agree that we should be moving faster. The other lesson I learned from, it's gone.
I know.
But, but that, so that, no, but it's okay, but that's sort of the, the, the general discussion that, that centers on this, but it is. Poor choice of analogy, given the prior discussion we had. There is no silver bullet here, there's no one thing that will make our math scores higher. Lots of little things have to combine to each have their own little incremental effect to get to where we all want to be. So, it's not just fidelity of execution, although that's important. It's not just better curriculum alignment, although that's important, and so on and so forth. It, it's going to be a harder slog than, oh, there it is, we found it, done. I want to be clear on that, there is no silver bullet.
Thank you, Steve, I'm gonna go to Dwayne, I want to make sure I give Rob the last, the final thing. So, so my question, still, it's my question, the board wants to adopt it, but it's my question is, what is the goal? Say that we're getting better? Where are we, where do we want to be, what is the goal? That's the question, I'm not gonna get an answer, but that's the question, right? That's a conversation we can ask.
Tim. Yeah, so, just wanted to clarify, first of all, I think several people have already said it, which is, I think, what Adam said about, I can't remember what you call them, administrative, subject matter experts, I'll call them for it, a lack of a better pronoun. Sounds like a fabulous way to get the, um, administration and coaching into the building and in those areas and helping too. So, I think that's certainly something that we should look at. And it sounds like, this is where I need to, you said, you'll see something on that soon. So, is that what I heard?
You did.
Okay. That's great. I'm looking forward to seeing that soon and hearing more about it. Because I think it's a, it sounds like a fabulous model that we ought to be implementing.
If there are no other comments, we're, I want to give Rob the final thing.
Sure, I guess, uh, I would just say, working backwards, the board, you know, I want to make sure you have all the confidence that we share that sentiment. So, we're at the point of the evolution of the program. So, when we start talking about six or seven years ago and where that generation is now relative to moving to the high school and the alignment, uh, et cetera, um, our internal conversations this year have been very much like you summarized. Okay, so this is where we're at, we have seen some improvements, and it's even more mining, uh, of that, that gives us some, some hope. But I guess what I'm saying is, when you consider everything, we're now ready to talk about, okay, here's the data about going forward, what eggs are we putting in the, how much is it around the instruction of the content? How much is there understanding the new textbook? And when we talked about with fidelity that many years ago, if it's a multi-tiered, uh, approach, fidelity's not one hundred percent, so I don't want to sound, you know, like an excuse, but the first year here with the boxes we checked, the second year, but we are at that point in time where we can start saying, where do we really want to focus? And what's going to be our goal at what point? And, uh, go from there. So, I just really want to emphasize the fact that we share that sentiment, and we are at that, quite frankly, exciting point of what's going to maybe inch them further, faster. So, uh, I think Adam just alluded to a couple of things, and you'll notice that in how we're, um, supporting the faculty with, uh, professional development. But coaches, I think, are, um, an integral part of it. So, I'll stop there because I'm kind of repeating it, but I just want to emphasize that no worries that we share the same sentiment. We think we're far enough down the road that we can look at the data, but then make a plan and put some time and, and emphasis to it.
Thank you, Rob. Do you think it's reasonable for us to do this in May?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm thinking about our agenda in May, which we have, we're gonna have a safe havens conversation. The community council is going to be expecting significantly of time for their security beholder. In addition, we had a committee structure that we wanted to circle back to in, in May, so.
Would you bring our statement in? No, 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 hang on, we missed a meeting in March, should we have a special meeting? Yeah. Or do we want to have a six-hour meeting? Yeah, um, hold that thought, Howard. Wait, you know, I want, I want Adam to be able to finish his comment too, but go ahead and go back to Adam.
Well, to piggyback on what Dwayne just said, that we're gonna have to have a special meeting because we have scholarship forms that we have to discuss, and those need to be done by May first.
Yep.
So, if we piggyback that meeting onto scholarship, we could do something together.
And don't we have a master schedule deadline too, on May? Review?
Uh, you folks asked us to bring data on the master schedule in May. Not sure how much of an agenda, how long of a discussion that would entail, but that was something as well.
So, you're not gonna be able to do the analysis by May, is that what you're saying?
Which analysis?
On the master schedule.
We have all the course enrollment data already. That was gonna be a topic, that was gonna be a question for me, what the board is looking for in May. From that, I, I don't know if you're looking for just the, the, how many students sign up for which course. That was my thought, but I, that was gonna be a clarifying question for me about, I don't know, that could be a three-hour discussion, or that can be a five-minute, here's what the data is. And I don't know which direction that's heading. My, my point was, the May agenda is, is very heavy already. And to be honest with you, I'm a little unclear about what the further discussion in math would be. There is also a philosophical direction that needs to be decided. Are we most concerned about where we rank in the state compared to our peers? Or are we most concerned about how far each individual student goes in progression through our school system? And the reason why that's a very different conversation is, um, we track data all sorts of different ways. And I, in particular, am concerned with how many of our students have we set a goal for them, that they've reached that goal, wherever that might be. Some kids being thirty points below proficiency is a major accomplishment for them, and for their academic goals. For other students, a seven seventy is a disappointment in the SAT. And that's true as well. So, uh, I, I'm not a big fan of this being our only strand that we look at because it's, it's oversimplified. We're concerned about the middle and where we end up as, and not reaching the middle of the student. So, there's a philosophical conversation that's baked into all of this that we've not even begun to have with the board, with the new superintendent. So, um, I'm not sure what, what we would be discussing, and it could be, be well prepared for that, probably more than the four weeks we have between now and this meeting.
Okay. So, there's a, there's another issue here, which is, it sounds like the May agenda is going to be really packed. And we've got the critical issue of security that we're dealing with. So, um, I want to go back to what Wayne had said. Is there, uh, is there a logic in having a special board meeting? I don't even know if we have time because we have to post that board meeting, right? We're going to have some time, we haven't had a post.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours, yeah. So, is there a logic in having a special board meeting to discuss security only? The, the, the one area where I could see that it would benefit us is just that it would give, um, it would give us an opportunity, it would give community council an opportunity to see the safe havens presentation, right? And then build the safe havens, you know, look at the safe haven presentation, see if you wanted to modify the community council recommendation. And we'd be able to review that ahead of the May third board meeting.
So, you'd be asking seventy percent at the special board meetings in April or at May?
I don't know, I'm just putting it out there, if you're saying that we have a special board meeting, like. At least this week, we missed the meeting, and we got stuff to do. So, whether you insert a meeting between now and then, it doesn't have to be security, it could be balance, right? Or you don't have to, not a patient source, so that thing's needed to fix the picture. So, I don't care, but if that we need an additional meeting, so. So, what's out there? Discussion? Tim?
Yeah, I'd be okay with an additional meeting. As Howard mentioned, we, you know, we have some scholarship stuff that we need to discuss as well, and that, that information needs to be back into, uh, the guy in the office, uh, prior to May first, preferably. So, we have the school vacation week come up last week of April. So, that, I don't know if anybody's out or not, but if, uh, there is other people that are away, then that, that kind of kills that whole week. So, and next week, we've already got the SAU board meeting on Tuesday, and other things happening that week. So, squeezing in another meeting that week would be difficult, which only leaves us for the following week.
Three days from today. Two weeks, yeah, be two weeks from now.
The Amherst board meeting is due soon.
So, if we, um, you know, Adam and/or Christine or whoever to, to support that, then we're gonna, you know, we can't have it on that night either.
Thirteen days from today.
All right. So, anyway.
Probably the other option is we can wait till, we can make it May third, and we can schedule an additional meeting between then and June if we need to. But I, what I'm hearing from this board, and I want to make sure I get input from everybody, is that we feel like, um, we feel like there's a lot to get done between now and the end of June. And that, the sense that I'm getting is that there's not enough time to meet, to get it all done, but between now and the end of June. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Essentially.
With additional meeting?
Yes, yes, here we go, yes.
I think we need to make it.
Wayne's point is that we, we actually skipped a meeting because of the snowstorm.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't go backwards in time.
Had another one in the middle.
But the things didn't go away. So, I understand.
Would an additional meeting be a?
Would it be a relief for you?
That's probably the wrong question.
Excuse Wayne, he's got a lot of meetings anyway, so.
Yeah, I, uh, meetings are no problem. This is not gonna come out the way I want it to come out, but I just want to remind the board gently that you're in the midst of a superintendent transition and new administration in the Amherst School District. The future planning is a big priority, the school start times is a big priority, consolidation of the school districts is a big priority. These are, I'm forgetting seven, I know that I'm forgetting seven other things, um, so, I.
Who, is that the old guy? I don't care.
The, uh, here's what I'd, I'd suggest. No one in this room looks at our math scores and says, hey, we were right. Not one of us. Our strategic plan that we're talking about is really about making major shifts to how we do school, how we do high school, how we do middle school. For the purpose of, we want to be, I want to be the best in the state of New Hampshire, whatever that means. It may not mean that we beat Hanover in our average number of kids that are above the standard, but it darn well better mean that we take every single kid farther than anyone else, anyone else could take, not particularly a kid. So, it's, it's kind of a wish on my part that we would focus our effort and energy on what can be changed for our school system. Because I, I'm thinking about these conversations going back and showing how our data from the past proves that we have a problem with math at the high school. I don't think anyone's arguing that our math scores are where we want them to be. So, I would like to be a little more forward focused on what are the major things we can be thinking about and discussing and debating that will be structural in nature and require courage in placing bets on something, because that's what's really gonna be in the long run, the difference that's made. I've heard, I will share, I've been privy to conversations, I've heard about how our math teachers at the high school have gotten together, looked at things. Daphne shared with me how our freshman, it was our freshman math teachers that spent, Division One math teachers that spent significant time realigning what they do in math and saw significant gains. Christine shared the projected proficiency scores for our freshmen and sophomores. They outpace our current juniors and seniors significantly. I'm not saying much to do about nothing, I'm saying, I, I think that there's, there's no internet, but there's pretty good momentum with what we're trying to do around here. So, uh, I, if we want to have another meeting to talk through it, I'm willing to talk through whatever the board wants to talk through. I just think that there, there needs to be some prioritization on where we spend our time.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. In the next planning meeting, Adam and I can bring up this subject and see what's needed. Okay. All right, time for public comment. Anybody from the public want to? Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Eastland, nice to meet you, I wrote, I am going to recommend to the board that you authorize some funds to do, as long as you're talking about math and can students go as far as they can go. They're the primary consumer of how we teach math and the math courses. But we don't have the full three sixty evaluation in place for the math courses. So, I had talked with Christine about this before, like, what would it take? And she's like, money, it, it takes money. So, I think getting their perspective outside of year-old scores is a valuable piece of data that you all could be looking at. How are they perceiving their education in math? How are they seeing the, how they're being taught? Is it, do they feel like it's effective? But it needs money. So, I'm gonna make that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else from the public? Seeing nobody? I'm sorry, yes, Amy.
So, what Lisa is talking about is what we did in Amherst, the econ back end study. And it was very valuable.
Yep.
It was a full math, like, five-year.
Yeah, at our assessment and a deep data dig deeper than we have time to be able to do.
Yep.
Um, and then they also looked at.
It was fantastic.
Yeah, it was great.
That's what I thought you were gonna say before.
It was, it was ten thousand dollars. It was money well spent, we got some great.
Yeah. It was an amazing investment.
Yes.
Yes.
That included a deep, um, research-based survey that students were provided.
Yeah, it was great.
That's a much more effective use of our time.
Yep.
Okay, let me, let me, uh, let me bring this in, Tim, and then Howard.
So, my question is, how, what is the timeframe? I guess that something like that gets pulled together, like, you know, so what is the ten thousand dollars? Ten thousand dollars buy us? Somebody sends out a, a survey and they collect all the results and they compile, and I get that part of it. But is it, like, done in a month? Is it done in two months? Is it done over six months?
Uh, it was about six months, and they came on site and worked with us to develop our process and to refine what that process looks like. Maybe we can shrink that a little bit. Um, they do use our NWEA scores to help them do a deep analysis, yeah. So, they're looking more deeply at growth, and they actually look at, um, each, um, quartile, I think it was, that they actually pulled.
Cohort of students.
Yeah, and they follow the cohorts through and look at, you know, um, the, um, students who may be below benchmark, were they growing more? Which is what we would be looking for. So, they did a deep analysis of our NWEA data, and we could even start with, say, seventh grade if we wanted to, start with seventh grade NWEA data and go through tenth to have them run that analysis. It would be pulling a little bit of what they experienced in Amherst, but we don't have, we only really have one full year of growth data from NWEA. So, I, it, we might need to talk to them. So I, it, we might need to talk to them about those pieces. And then they administered the survey and they interviewed teachers, so it was a pretty extensive process. I mean, I can share the process at the next meeting, I can even reach out to see.
Bring the report, too.
Yeah.
See what you get. What we got, it was really good.
I highly recommend that we pull that.
Howard?
Do we have the money to do this?
Yes.
Can I make a motion that we go ahead and spend the ten thousand dollars?
Make it twenty to decide. Spend that one. It's going to be options.
Yeah.
Six months, six months is ten thousand dollars.
Three.
Four years ago?
Yeah.
Take that, yeah.
Go ahead. I make the motion to spend up to twenty-eight thousand dollars to fund this spending.
Okay, motion from Howard? Go to the second. Second, discussion?
He says, yes, Wayne.
No, no, I said, I said, yes, I have a question.
Oh, you have a question, I'm sorry.
For discussion.
I'm sorry.
All right. So again, more for Christine. The, what, what is the, um, so you get a bunch of information, and what, what's the desired outcome from that? I mean, what, what do you change? Do you, are there any changes? What do you try to change? You know, what's, what do you do?
All the variables.
Yeah.
What do you do with it?
Yeah, I mean, it's great that we get all kinds of great information, and it sounded like it was really valuable.
Yeah, they make recommendations for what we should be looking at changing, and in Amherst, they felt that both our, you know, intervention program was working well because they saw students that, um, were at the lower achievement levels, making more growth than what would be expected, so they attributed that to a strong intervention program. So that was something that was noted. But then they also saw, there was something in the math surveys that our students took, and something, I think it was around like a more of a growth mindset, and that we should be instituting some instructional practices to better support a growth mindset, and that might help to develop more mathematical thinkers and students who had, you know, strong feelings of like self-worth in mathematics. So they, they do make specific recommendations. These are former educators and former superintendents.
So were those ideas implemented?
They.
Did you achieve the growth that you expected to see?
So we haven't done another formal evaluation. Our NWEA growth scores are really strong, um, in, you know, both in Montford and in Amherst, though the study was actually only Amherst that we did the study in. But, um, you know, we felt that it was really valuable for us to look deeply. I don't, I wish I had the time to do that deep data dig, and I don't. So they were able to do that for us. And I'm happy to share the report that was generated from, for Amherst, to get a sense of what they might produce, and they're also happy to do something a little bit different, too, if there's a need.
Wayne was very well saying. Wayne, you had a question?
Yeah, I do. I'm going to put some parameters, uh, constraints and parameters around it. So you say that the, this particular study is going to take our assessment, is going to take the part.
I would, yes. I mean, I would think we probably need that amount of time to be safe.
Which the company's serving, or providing that service.
Ed Visualize.
So I, I would suggest that the motion to modify, or we need to amend the motion appropriately to whoever it is, and put some time constraint on when this thing is going to be completed, and what, what are we going to do with it going from there?
So I don't think there's any way to be able to do the student survey before the end of the year. I, I think that could be a challenge to get, to work with them, to develop a project plan and get the survey, so I would think we would need to survey students in the fall, which is why I'm saying six months.
Okay.
And I, it's really the end of the year constraint that I feel we have.
Steve?
I'm just saying now, we don't know. It's not my nature, I hear some things and that's what I thought.
Okay.
If you table for a month, I'm okay with that.
And I can provide a report over email and then provide a quick update for options and pricing.
I'm just surprised we haven't done it in this high school. I'm surprised we didn't do it in the high school.
So.
That's why I'm so, I would be so eager to vote for Howard's motion, because I'm surprised we haven't done it.
Mm-hmm. So we waited after five years of implementation of the new math program in Amherst, which we actually started earlier than at South Hegan. And while we implemented new standards, our textbooks, I think it's either three or four years that we're finishing up. I think it's four years for core one, two, and three. So we're just at the end of four years. I hadn't made that suggestion yet, just looking around that four to five-year mark to start it, so this is actually the appropriate time and the same time in line with what we did in Amherst.
It was, it was done as an evaluation of programs that were.
You want to get over the implementation dip before you do an evaluation?
Okay. Okay, David?
Just a question for clarification. You said six months, Christine, is that six school months, or does it include six months of the summer?
So, um, six months from now, I think we could probably get a report.
Oh, includes, it includes the summer then?
Yeah. But if we didn't have summer in there, I think we probably could speed that up to three or four months of actual school time.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table from Howard to authorize up to twenty thousand dollars spending for, I can move the company again.
Ed Visualize?
Yeah, Ed Visualize, or another like company, um, to conduct a math evaluation. Wayne?
I'm not sure if Steve said it or not, but I'm interested in his motion to table.
I, I did not make that motion because the other wave is going through.
Don't be intimidated by the waves.
So if, so if no more discussion?
I moved to table.
All right, discussion on motion to table? Any discussion? No? All right, so we have to vote on the motion to table. Okay?
So is the reason to table because you want to get a more precise cost versus just throwing twenty grand out there, or is it because you don't want to spend any money?
This sounds like an awesome idea, and then immediately questions came around, how this works? What's going to happen? And we, and Christine's like vamping from four-year-old serious. I'd like a thoughtful plan to do this.
Yeah.
And know, know what's going to happen, that's all. I, I will absolutely vote for this if Christine and Adam come next, next, as the next meeting, say we should do this.
Yeah, okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is, is the table, Howard's motion. Okay? So all those in favor signify by saying yea?
Yea.
Aye? Whatever. All those opposed?
Aye.
Just one? Okay. Six to one. It was seconded by?
No, the table was seconded by.
By Wayne.
I could have made the motion, but it was his idea.
The second was you did the first.
So we'll table this discussion till May, but it's a good discussion, Howard, it was a good motion.
Yeah.
I only did it because you guys were so.
Passionate.
Passionate.
Rushy-washy.
At Amherst.
Yeah.
It's a good discussion, so we'll have it, we'll have it in, in May with a thousand other discussions.
Yeah.
All right.
Maybe it'll go fast. We talked about it already.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, we've had public comment, we're now going to action items. Um, all right, so the, let me see, ten past nine. All right, so PPC policies are up. I want to preface this by saying that each one of these policies, one, two, three, and four, have been looked at through the committee, they've been edited, they've been emailed to everybody ahead of time, and typically, the process here is to move them forward because they've been through committee and they've been revised and all the due diligence has been done. Having said that, I would like to open up for discussion. Any questions regarding the policies under, under section nine A?
I asked for a framing.
Yes, please do, Steve.
So this, the process for negotiation of staff is, we negotiate the PPC, we need some agreement, we come to board, the board buys into that agreement, and then it goes to the voters' approval. This will happen this year. Voters approve, yay, thank you voters. Now, the way the agreement gets implemented is, the policy language gets treated. So this is nothing new or different, it was just the final implementation step in that long process that started. Wayne and I produced exactly that. So there's nothing here that, that is binding, and, uh, John said, and everybody that, we have been led by the PPC, yep, and they know, yep, this is what we agreed, I'm the owner of the local language, and I agree firmly, this is what the board agreed, so it should be.
Thank you, Steve, for that additional clarification, appreciate it. Any questions? Tim?
Uh, no questions, but I knew that we moved the PPC policies through the final process.
Okay, so we have a motion from him to move the policies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Amy? Any discussion?
I wasn't going to do it because I might just get tabled.
On that note.
This was a safe one, I would have.
On that note, um, all those in favor of moving the policies? All those opposed? Seven-oh.
Okay.
Um, now, the IGEE policy.
Yeah.
Discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Wayne?
Um. It's the, uh, it's the parent legal guardian request for extension.
Well, can I just frame it?
Well.
Do mine, Wayne? Go ahead. Go ahead, Amy.
So this was discussed, um, at SAU initially. It went back to policy for some revision, came back to SAU, and was voted to send to the respective boards to approve. So we did receive some, um, comments from Wayne and David.
I withdraw all my comments.
Okay. So.
Because it was timing-wise now.
Right, so we received some with, uh, comments from Wayne, and he's welcome to go through those, and when you're done, I'll tell you. We, we had a further discussion at policy on Wednesday, um, and so I can respond to your comments.
Okay. Wayne?
Yeah, I, I did send off the concerns I had to both Amy and Howard. Go through, I'll try and go through them quickly. First of all, uh, NHR is a eleven, I'm sorry, one eighty-six, eleven, comma, nine, S.C. It, it instructs the school board, and this is my concern, to adopt a policy allowing a parent or legal guardians' objection to specific course material. Our title is, it starts off suggesting the parent needs to request an exception. Looking at policies of other schools, similar schools and so forth, it seems to be consistent with the language of the law from two thousand twelve. And I felt that, uh, the legislation suggested that the district agree on, that the parent and guardian agree on specific material. Our policy, um, in my opinion, I felt with the head owners, in that it, first of all, states that, uh, it lets everyone know that the district and, and the curriculum is developing professionals and agreeing to by the board, so forth. The, the language of the law doesn't deal with that. It deals with finding an agreement in rare cases where a parent or guardian objects to specific course material. I, I can provide these comments to everyone, but the, uh, the other concerns that I have is that the policy does not address that the parent or guardian is responsible for any additional cost or expenses that might be incurred in the alternative specific material. The policy does not mention, uh, that the, that the alternative material must be sufficient to enable the child to meet state requirements for education in a particular subject area. I, I would suggest, and, and there was one school that, one district, rather, that to facilitate this whole process, put together a form. Instead of saying, instead of the parents, uh, coming with different, however they present their case, just kind of put together a form that might guide it and speed this thing along, because we do want to move along. The other issue is that we don't address, and it looks like in two thousand seventeen September, the legislation, and we've been dealing with this for a while now, but the legislation, uh, there was a change in the legislation to require school districts or classroom teachers to provide parents' legal guardians no less than two weeks' advance notice form of curriculum course material used for instruction of human sexuality or human sexual education. Our current policy is silent on that. I'm, I'm not going to go through the rest of this. You have it, and you guys have minutes to discuss.
Yep.
Okay.
So we met, um, on Wednesday, and I'm just going to read our, um, response to this.
Please do.
From our minute.
Yep.
So discussed IGEE comments provided by South Hegan, um, SESD board member, and reviewed all similar policies from other, or interviewed similar policies from other school districts. Committee concluded that in light of those comments and policies, uh, further consideration may be warranted to attempt to modify IGEE within SE thirty-nine. At this time, however, the committee decided to take no action and instead focus on higher priorities. Decision rationale includes a need to review required policies that have yet to be considered by any SEU district, SEU thirty-nine district, the existing already approved IGEE policies throughout all SE thirty-nine districts, whether as a result of recent or historical actions of those districts, and the lack of actual problems encountered with the existing IGEE policies. Instead, the committee will keep IGEE on an action list for future considerations. They generally seek participation of all board members, particularly appreciate the participation, and respectfully request understanding when provided comments are So we are proposing to vote on IGEE tonight, um, given that we, that all board members have, had the opportunity to make, um, suggestions at or prior to the SAU thirty-nine board meeting. And we have about thirty required policies that we are attempting to get through before the end of the year. And we looked at the, the RSAs. We don't feel that we're in violation. Policies are not meant to repeat the RSA, um, it's just meant to provide clarification. So that was our conclusion. So we are not going to be accepting making revisions to it at this time. Certainly, this board can have the right to, to vote, um, and that vote will stand, but we're not going to look at this right now. We will, we, we did talk about developing a system where we'll flag policies and archive all comments that have been submitted, so that when the, when that comes up for discussion again, we'll have all of those comments readily available to be able to consider and incorporate those into the policies next time we look at it.
Okay, so this, this committee is asking us to vote and approve on a policy tonight?
Yep.
Howard?
I just want to clarify what Wayne said about the sexual part of it, um, that policy, because I want you to understand that we have a policy that makes exemptions for class work, IHAM, which is a health education exemption policy. So we already have that policy in place, but what you're playing, what you're saying is, uh, different from that policy?
I'm, I'm not sure, um, for example, if there's some course content that deals with the subject of rape, uh, does that fall under the other policy? If there's a fall under this policy? There's some literature, some material that, uh, that deals with such a subject or instance, there's something that, uh, parents might, uh, not want their, their child to deal with in a policy.
I think you'll find that a lot of the policies, when you start to look at a specific one, you'll find reference to other policies. What you just said about rape, you probably could find in the bullying policy. So you can find different parts in different ones. But your comment about not authorizing us to go forward with this one, if we already have the other one in place, didn't make sense to me. That makes sense?
No, the legislation calls that out, and we don't, that's what I'm saying.
I think we've probably had a significant amount of discussion to, to take a vote. So, do we have a motion to vote on, um, IGEE policy for parent legal guardians' request for exception to specific course materials? Does that make sense? Motion from Tim? Motion from Tim, do we have a second? Second from Steve, any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor of adopting the policy, say aye?
Aye.
Nay? Six to one. Wayne should send the vote. All right. Thank you. Right, the motion is going to non-public session.
Make a motion.
Can motion second? Amy seconds?
Stand, yes.
Answer, yes.
Stand, yes. Standing, yes.
Half a yes.
Eighty yes.
Purvis, yes. Thank you.